And let's call the meeting to order and do a roll call.
Sure, Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Schulman?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Mancini?
Here.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Here.
Mr. Johnson? That's a here with a mute. Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
And Mr. Mancini?
I'm here, second time.
Oh, you keep, people are moving, so I'm trying to keep up, okay.
Okay, the first item of business is going to be a public hearing. All the commissioners are more than welcome to participate in the discussion. I believe, however, given the number we have, that Mr. Cantor and Mr. Mancini cannot vote on this matter. Is that correct, Steve?
No, we don't, I don't believe we have any public hearings.
Oh, I apologize. I thought, I thought that Costco was a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, we probably should have taken that heading off the agenda, it would have made it a little more.
Well, that, that's fine. I take back what I said. Our first item of business then is 19-97 SPR slash 16-02 SP, Costco requests to modify approved plan to relocate handicap parking spaces. Do we have someone here representing Costco?
Yes, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, Michelle Carlson from BL Companies and Jessica Bates from BL Companies are here representing Costco.
Okay, please, go ahead with your presentation.
Sure, first, we'd like to apologize for not having anyone at the last meeting. There was a communication mix-up. We didn't know that we were on an agenda or we would have been here to present. So, we apologize for any confusion caused by us not being available. I do, I can share my screen if you would like to go over the plans. Just so you know, Jessica and I did listen to your meeting minutes. So, we are aware of what you spoke about at the meeting that we weren't present, we did listen to catch up. Can you all see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so as you know, this is the Costco at 779 Connecticut Avenue. Currently, the handicap spaces, the majority of them are all up front, across the front of the parking lot. The main entrance is off of Connecticut Avenue. Patrons that come in, accessible spaces are right here for them to park. And there's also a choice point, if you've been to the site, for other patrons to come down here and get underneath. There's a, this is a deck here, a parking deck, so you, you come in the site, take a right, and you come all the way down and around and you can go under the deck. Or you can come in here, come straight in, park down here, park here. Obviously, there's all of these areas on the top deck to park. The situation is, with all of the accessible spaces here, it gets extremely busy and confusing with people coming in and out of these spaces while cars are trying to come in. The main reason that we want to move the spaces is twofold. One, obviously, is for safety, which is important, but the second is to make sure we bring the site up into ADA compliance. The site right now, Costco's got, has a mandate for all of their facilities across the country that they're evaluating each site and making necessary adjustments to make sure that their accessible spaces are meeting ADA requirements. And right now, we need to have the spaces with the, that are closest to the front door. And as you can see from this ring that is on the drawings, you have, the majority of these spaces now along the side of the building are not closest to the main entryway. So, for safety reasons and to bring the site into conformance with ADA requirements, we've moved and are proposing to move the spaces to this area here. And that's essentially the gist of the application. We're not decreasing parking space count. I think we're actually plus one on the parking space count when we move these all to regular spaces. And I can actually put a blow up on the screen, so it might be easier for you to see a little bit better of what we're, what we're proposing. I mean, that, that's really it in a nutshell, and Jessica and I are here to answer any questions that we missed at the last meeting.
Questions? I mean, we did have a fairly robust conversation among ourselves about this. But let me also get an answer to the question regarding the existing spaces. Am I correct, there is a sidewalk adjacent to those spaces? Are there frequent breaks in that sidewalk to allow, to allow the handicap to get onto the sidewalk?
This sidewalk, this sidewalk here is actually flush with the pavement. There's wheel stops in front of every space right now. And that's, that's how this area is treated. The sidewalk is actually flush. And so, the wheel stops will remain, so nobody, you know, drives forward onto the sidewalk.
So, with the spaces that you're proposing, you don't have quite the same system? You don't have a dedicated, excuse me, sidewalk for folks coming out of their cars and going into the store?
Correct. We have, we have a pathway here, okay? A main, a main walkway here. And then, we have a path with a crosswalk here to get, to get to the store for those spaces. I mean, we were, Jessica was out there the other morning, and there was quite a bit of activity with cars backing in and out of here, cars honking. She felt like she was in New York City because there was a lot happening in this area. This will just be a much safer condition if we have these spaces here and employees park here.
Well, I certainly understand your concern about having the spaces where they currently are. I know myself, going in and out, there, there are sometimes significant delays from disabled folks frequently backing out. My understanding, and I, I don't think you mentioned this in the presentation, is that those spaces would become spaces for employees. So, you wouldn't have the kind of in and out, the frequent in and out that, that you do with customers. Is that correct?
Correct, correct. And we, we really do need to move these because even though there's a sidewalk here, all of these spaces here are not closest to the front door. So, technically, this is a violation now of, you know, current ADA laws. And as I said before, Costco's mandated across all of their, their facilities across the country to bring everything into ADA compliance.
Could, could you enhance, and I'm not sure it's an enhancement, but could you enhance the safety for the disabled passengers crossing that dark, those two dark crosswalks by perhaps having caution or a stop sign located some feet from them? So that people understand that it's a walkway for the disabled?
Yes, you have a, you know, yield to pedestrian sign that could be put there. And also, and also stop signs, so that it's clear that it's not only are they stopping, but they have to yield to the pedestrian because somebody could make the stop movement, right? And then decide to keep going when technically they have to yield legally to the pedestrians in the crosswalks.
Right, I, I think that makes sense.
Correct.
Comments from any of the other commissioners?
Well, I think it sounds like a good idea. But my experience in that parking lot is that where those walkways are, you know, there are cars turning in, going down, coming out. People step, stepping, stopping and waiting at the very first spot for someone to load their groceries into the back of their car. I don't see any solution for that except sort of managing the traffic out there.
I think if you take these spaces out of play, it helps better manage the traffic, at least of what's backing out here. And like I said, the main purpose is to make sure that they have an ADA compliant site with the latest and greatest regulations. And that's what this plan is, is getting at, and I think it's improving a little bit. I mean, it's a very, you know, it's a very busy site. You've all, I'm sure, been there.
Yeah.
Just to confirm for the record, you said that your current, the current situation is not in compliance with ADA regulations and law. Have there, have you gone to the trouble, has anyone reviewed the plans and assured that your new plan is ADA compliant?
Oh, yes, by numerous people. It's been vetted out. We are very confident that it's ADA compliant.
Josh versus Steve, I did run through with Bill Ireland, who's the chief building official, who also regulates the ADA for the city, and he, he is comfortable with what they propose. Thank you.
That was good.
Anything else from the commissioners? Can I have a motion on recommended action?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To approve it.
I believe that's what's called for here. Steve, is that correct?
It's really, you know, technically a modification to their approved site plan, so I think you can authorize that to approve the modification.
Okay, so Galen moves. Is there a second?
Second.
And Josh seconds. Let's do a roll call.
If you could stop sharing screen for a second.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I need my.
I'll mute myself.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Mancini?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson? I believe that's a yes. Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
I believe that's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and again, I apologize for the confusion and not being at the last meeting. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, next item, and when we've discussed this before, we've always done all three together.
Mr. Schulman, there's one other item before that is the, the 45 Glover request for the, regarding the police officer.
I apologize, it's not on my agenda. I may have a earlier agenda.
It's the same applicant, so he'll be, he'll be moving right into his next item from that point.
Okay, yeah, I have an, I apologize, I have an earlier agenda. And this, my understanding is it's 3-96 SPR slash 8-976 SPR, 45 Glover. This is a request to temporarily modify conditions of approval to suspend the evening police officer requirements. And we'll, we'll allow Attorney Waters to explain that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, good to see you again. For the record, David Water, general counsel of Building and Land Technology, and among others, property owner at 45 Glover Avenue. This is a, a result of COVID. When Hewitt Associates originally built their office building at 45 Glover Avenue, it was understood that the bridge that is across the Norwalk River on Glover Avenue needed to be widened. And it's currently a two-lane wide bridge. It was proposed to be a three-lane wide bridge. And the reason for that was so that you'd have lanes going out on, from Glover Avenue onto Main Avenue, and one lane coming in from Main Avenue onto Glover Avenue. The reason for that was because in the afternoon, peak hour, there was concern that traffic might stack and back up to the point where people trying to get out of Glover Avenue would back, would end up across the Ongrade Railroad tracks at Glover Avenue. So, the, by creating two lanes out, it creates more stacking area and therefore, there would be less of a possibility that there would be a stacking that would end up over the train tracks in the afternoon. However, because everybody knows that there is, there are improvements that have been contemplated by DOT for quite some time that would actually increase that bridge not to three lanes but to four lanes, Hewitt appealed to this commission, the DOT, to say, rather than putting in a three-lane bridge, only to have it taken out and put in a four-lane bridge thereafter, we'd like to avoid doing that, and the commission said we're able to you doing that as long as you have a, police officers actually. Site in the afternoon peak hour, one, to control the traffic signal at the intersection of Main Avenue and Glover Avenue, and the second one, to be located at the Ongrade train crossing so that they would be able to direct people not to pull over onto the train tracks if they couldn't get across the train tracks. And that's been working fine for quite a number of years at this point. However, with COVID, there's nobody in the office buildings. And so, therefore, there's really no need for somebody to control the traffic at the intersection at this point. The police department has confirmed that that is the case. They continue, we continue to pay them and to have them present at this point. But at least for, on a temporary basis, there's not a need for the two police officers that are there. So, what we have proposed is that until January 15th, there would be a relaxation of the requirement to provide the two police officers with the understanding that when it gets to the beginning of January, we'll know better as to when our tenants at 253545 are coming back or not coming back, and also the tenant 20 Glover as well. And so, we can determine at that point whether it's appropriate to ask for a further extension or whether it's appropriate to have police officers reinstituted at that point. The thing that we are absolutely certain of is that fact set is not coming back until January at the earliest. The building at 801 Main Avenue, which is also known as 25 Glover, was occupied by Diageo, and Diageo is no longer occupying it. The, most of our other tenants, GE, is also a very limited actual physical occupancy at 901 Main Avenue. So, there really just isn't anybody in those buildings at this point. And so, that's the request, is the temporary release of the requirement for the two police officers until at least January 15th. And we'll know more by early January, what the intention of our tenants are as to whether that would necessitate a police officer at that point or not. Obviously, if GE decided that they were going to bring everybody back after Thanksgiving or something of the sort like that, we would understand that that would, and that necessitated the parking, the police officers, then we would bring them back in as well. And we certainly understand that if the commission wanted to impose that as, as part of the understanding and conditions of this temporary release, we understand that that would be appropriate.
Questions from the commissioners? Comments by staff?
Nothing on my end. It's, it's, my two cents is it seems like a reasonable approach. If you decide similarly and want to move it forward, I would recommend, you know, and I, as I believe Attorney Waters had attested to, that you have the ability to reinstitute that at a sooner date, should the need arise. Now, Steve, are there similar applications coming? I mean, are there going to be similar circumstances where? I'm wondering if this is, if this is going to be the first of the people who've kind of applications? I feel like if we're, we should have some sort of a consistent policy here. I don't think there is any other location in the city, at least that I'm not aware of, that has like a traffic officer required at intersections. I, I'm not aware of any.
Okay. Other questions, comments? If not, can I have a motion to approve with the one caveat that should it become necessary earlier, that Attorney Waters would notify us?
Moved.
Okay.
A second.
Josh moves, and Frank seconds. Again, let's, let's do a roll call.
Sure. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Mancini?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Galen, you're muted.
Sorry about that, yes.
Mr. Cantor?
You, yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Also unanimous.
Okay, next item, as I began somewhat prematurely to say, 1-20M, 2-20R, and 2-20SPR. And those are all three merit station Norwalk. The three requests that we have been discussing, the proposed change to the zoning map, the change to the amendment to amend the definition of development park to revise executive office zone to permit a new master plan approval. And finally, site plan review, proposed master plan for executive office development. Mr. Waters, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, David Waters, general counsel of Building and Land Technology. Just a couple of things, actually, from our end. I think most of it is from your consultant, but just a couple of housekeeping matters. One of them is that the third application on your agenda, which is the site plan application, because the commission has indicated that they would prefer to see approval of master plan by special permit rather than by site plan review, we have actually withdrawn the application for site plan review, and we have concurrently filed an application for special permit and have suggested, and we've agreed with staff, that all of the information that has been submitted, so all of the plans that you've been reviewing and all of the materials that have come in, and discussions that we've had, would be part of the record for these site plan, that had been part of site plan review will in fact be part of the special permit application as well. So, on a going-forward basis, there will still be three applications. Instead of it being a site plan review application, it will be a special permit application. The other that I wanted to bring to your attention, subsequent to our last meeting with you, we submitted a, an update that had been requested. I can't remember if it was from the planning commission or the zoning commission. But our consultant, Dr. Poland from Goman and York, had submitted a, an update of his analysis, his economic analysis, because the question had come up, with the changes that may or may not occur as a result of COVID, did that change his opinions or not? I don't know if that's been circulated to you, but I do know that it is on the website. It is a response, a letter that, from him, that was dated September 2nd of this year. And basically, summary, what he says is he doesn't see significant changes. There may be some changes, and, and what he thinks they would be is actually a reduction in people rather than anything else, particularly school-aged children. But I'll allow you, certainly, I would encourage you to review the, his comments, and when we finally get to a public hearing, he will be certainly available for discussion at that point. I believe that we knew that the, the two significant pieces of information are really coming from your consultants rather than from us.
Right, and I, I think this might be the point at which we ask DeCarlo and Dahl to step in and give us their presentation.
Perfect.
All right. Jeff, you want to turn yourself on? Mr. Chairman, would you like to have traffic first, the, the traffic assessment? Or would you like to have master plan?
Let's deal with the master plan first, then traffic.
Okay, so you have a document, and Steve, can this be brought up? So that, I, well, do you want it brought up? I think, I think it's helpful.
I think it is useful to have those visuals in front of us.
Okay.
Okay, give me one sec.
Okay, so while, while he's pulling that up, what we tried to do was to, to put the choices that you have before you in a, in a logical and finite format so that you can make, I think we've got five choices here, or five topics that you make choices on that would then be the basis for the applicant's design team coming up with a two-dimensional master plan. So, we're, we're trying to break out of this issues of height and massing above the podium deck, and also issues of use. So that right now, we're just dealing with a two-dimensional diagram. And that seems to be a, a way to get some issues resolved and leave other issues for the next stages of this, this process. Now, you have before you, so the, the, our report or recommendations, and it's in this series of, a series of points. The first point is dealing with Glover Street's alignment. And you may remember from our report of, of June 24th that we had two options that were worth considering. We still think that they are worth considering. Option A is to change the alignment of Glover to a more straight street that makes a bend just before Raccoon Creek, or Raccoon Stream, rather. And option B is to keep the existing alignment. Now, the, the features, there you are. The features of, of keeping the existing alignment is you have a larger area, about three and a half acres, for Raccoon Stream Park with still the area east of Glover, which is, I, I, it's a ravine, it's a valley, it's a, I'm not sure what the term is, but it's clear, the stream is, is well below ground level. You have a continuous streetscape that follows Glover, and a subsequent point, we'll talk about how close to Glover it would be, with minimum breaks. And you have the town square. Common things are the general arrangement of buildings and the town square, the streetscape. The difference is, it's basically right here, just the alignment. So, so B is keeping the existing alignment, which as you may remember, our report said, it gives, gives visually, in coming each direction in Glover, a building or a part of the building. What you see there is sort of a, a curved nose just south and west of Raccoon as a focus for the, for the street. And the first one is, is more straightforward, but does require a realignment. With some of these points, we'll have a recommendation. With some, it's purely whatever you discuss. We would recommend the option B as being both a little bit easier and more likely to have a visual interest, and the park is more likely to be a, a significant area worth going to. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
All right. Why don't we take, take a look at the transportation issues?
Okay. Transportation issues, meaning in this master plan? Okay. All right, so, okay, so we'll go through all of the points, and then we can go back. That's another way of dealing with it. Okay, so, so the second point is adding, do we want to add, and this we did not have in our report, came as a thought afterwards, that as you're going along Glover, you're really, there's no way to turn around right now. When, when I was visiting the site, I made a U-turn at the southern intersection that's shown there, I forget the name of that street. And at the northern way, I just turned around in the middle of the street, but there's no real legal way to make a good turn. So we're suggesting that you consider adding two roundabouts, and there's a picture down a little bit off the screen right now there, of a roundabout, doesn't have to be exactly like this, but just, just gives you the idea. It's not a, a big element. It's probably 100 feet, maybe a tad more in diameter, but it's enough that a car can safely make a U-turn, basically. So that's, that's the second decision to make. Third decision, and we, we would recommend the roundabouts. Third, third decision is one that's really, it's, it's, there was a question about, is the public square big enough? That has been proposed for this. And so right now, as near as we can scale it, it's about 120 feet wide and 105 feet deep. The property line really limits how far back it can go, so it can't get much deeper than 105. It could be made a little bit wider, and just as a point of discussion, and we have no opinion on this, 150 feet would make it a little bit bigger. But it did occur to us that at the terminus, at the, at the open side of, of that square, it would merit having some architectural sculptural element that visually says this is the end of the public space, because otherwise you just have a rather ill-defined slope. And those are five pictures, not saying do any one of those, but could be anything from, there's an upper left-hand corner is a classical colonnade, that's the public square in Denver. The upper right is a, actually rather famous fountain sculpture, also in Denver. Middle left is a hemisphere of a, of a bench in a more traditional maybe style that happens to be in Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. Lower to left is a bench wall, and again, a bench slash wall. Another bench at Yale University, and then lower right is a, it's a Civil War memorial in Philadelphia. Doesn't have to be any of those, that's for the, the applicant to, and his design team, their design team, to think of some wonderful thing that goes with all of their design, but it seems like something should happen there. Okay, we go to four. Green infrastructure was part of our charge. We're going to suggest that most of that issue is dealing with what happens on top of the podium decks and does not really need to be addressed at this time and might confuse the issue. It'll be clearer once the, the massing of buildings and, and whatever goes on top of the podium decks is, is dealt with. So we're suggesting we don't deal with it right now. Number five is, and this was, I believe this was discussed during, I don't believe it was in our report per se. I think it was in our report, but it was not in with a, a diagram, that you would want to give the applicant instruction as to whether they want, whether they should include a, a plaza that is an extension of the Merritt 7 Office Plaza system that spans the decks and connects down to Glover Street. The purpose of this would be to really invite the, I can't remember how many office workers are in all of those buildings, but to give them a natural and, and encouraging way to cross the tracks and come in and frequent the, the, the businesses that are on the west of Glover. The, the train station, to refresh your memory, does quote, "cross the tracks," but it's, it's crossing is a tube that's probably no more than 10 feet wide. And yes, mechanically, it could get you across the tracks, but it's not necessarily a particularly inviting thing. So the picture down below shows the railroad station is the arrow to the right. The deck, the most logical place for it, to get it somewhat centered on the development, the applicant's development, would be somewhere around where the arrow to the left shows. And just below that, just to refresh your memory, one of the better, better parts of the Merritt 7 Plaza system, our podium's top system, just gives you some idea of what that, that deck might be like. Now, in deciding this, the applicant doesn't really have control over Merritt 7. Obviously, a lot of approvals would, would be necessary to get that Metro North DOT, but it's, this would be the time you would want to think about, should it be at least conceptually thought of at this time? That's number five. Number six. Okay, so number six, then, is that whole question of from the curb of Glover to the building face of the podium, what's the appropriate design distance that they should work to? Doesn't have to be exactly consistent, there could be some variation, but it's, it's the appro, this is the appropriate time to say, about what sort of environment do you want? So if given three options, you could come up with other options. 12 foot two is the minimum standard that the city has. That's including the, the street trees, the, the borders, the minimum five feet from the border to the, to the building face. So you get at least five feet to walk with the, with the, the city standard. 18 feet is basically, and if you scroll down a little bit there, okay, that's Washington Avenue. And I think we have this written there somewhere, that 18 feet is about what Washington Avenue has from the building face to the curb line at the bump outs. Gives you enough space that one, one restaurant has put two sets of tables in, but there's not really much walking space there, but certainly, one set of tables of walking spaces is doable in 18 feet. And then where the parking spaces are, that's 10 feet on Washington, so that's approximately equal, equal to your 12 two. And then the other possibility is to, or I think we're saying 25 feet, as, as if you wanted a more generous space that those pedestrian oriented activities, commercial slash retail, could could use in, in a variety of ways. The bigger the space is, to some extent, the more you can do with it. So that's, that's guidance, and all of this would be south of Raccoon. The portion north of Raccoon, in our opinion, is really related to, yeah, actually, that's, it's a good picture, right, the, the aerial. Or, or that's good, too. The, the building, I, I think it's building three or 2.3, yeah, 3.1, 3.2. That's really related to the curb. It's not a building that, no matter what its design, is liable to be part of the pedestrian experience south of Raccoon. And so we don't have a strong opinion, or even an opinion at this point, until we see what further the, the applicant comes up with. And then the, the final issue, which has no illustrations there, because it's for future, is to keep this a simple design discussion that, at this point, the mix and location of uses is, is not an essential decision to make. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Okay. You want to take this off, Steve? I'd like to get a little feedback from Attorney Waters on what we've just looked at.
And this is the first that he's saying it.
Right, and then, and then we'll open it up to the commissioners.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We haven't had a lot of time to review it, we just got it. But that being said, we had a few thoughts. First of all, the, the concept of the realignment of Glover Avenue versus a maintaining the existing alignment. The, one of the things that, we have a couple of, of thoughts on realignment. One of them is, is I think we've disclosed to you, that we have a tenant that has a long-term lease at 129 Glover. It's, it's a veterinary facility. And so that area likely to be the very last area to be developed. So part of the, the understanding that the commission would have to have is that that realignment would not occur until very late in the master plan process, because we don't have the ability to run the realigned road right through the, where the building is currently located. The other thought, two other thoughts on realignment and, and and whether that's an appropriate or a good thing or not. The, the first one is that we actually feel that leaving the S curves in there is a, is a, a good thing, because it is something in the nature of traffic calming. If you, if you create it as a straightaway, you're going to have people that tend to move a lot faster in an area that you really don't want them to move faster. One of the reasons that we proposed the brick pavers for where the intersections are is, is again, to try and calm people down and slow them down, and the S curves actually tend to help that. The third point on that is that if you, and it's readily apparent from, from the two alternatives, that if you do the realignment, you end up with a significant area of that park or open space, the public open space that is to the east of the roadway, but it's not really proximate to the buildings that are there. You either cross the street, or you're coming down the street to get to it. If you do the other one, the other alternative, then you're actually amassing an area of open space that is more significant, and it is where most of the people are. So we actually think that the realignment is probably not the better way to go. But could it be done? Sure, it's just a question of timing.
And your, your, your feeling about the roundabout?
Excuse me?
Your feeling about the roundabout?
To be honest with you, that, having just seen those today, we really haven't thought too much about it or have any conclusions about it yet. I understand the thought process behind it. And I'm not sure that maybe that is the best thing to do, maybe it's not. It actually ties in with, with our other kind of general comment that, that ties into a number of these changes, and that is that, to the extent that we are doing improvements that would modify the footprints of these buildings and, and incur would create some incursions into where the, the proposed footprints are, it means that there are ramifications to that economically as well. It means that now you have to figure out how to get the, the density that's being proposed in a, in a smaller footprint. So to the extent that you've got a roundabout, that now means moving the buildings closer or back or what have you, we would then have to address, how do you get to the same density? And that actually comes up in the next comment, which goes with the public square. The concept of widening the square by 30 feet, we don't really have a problem with. But what it probably, what it means is, now in order to get the units in that would have been in that area, that we probably would, would make more of that building into an 11-story building, where currently some of it drops down to a five-story. We probably would have to reconfigure it to some extent, so that we could actually get to the same number of units that we're proposing with a different configuration. As far as the, the architectural feature at the, at the terminus, certainly that's something that we would be interested in. It's actually, at this point, we haven't really designed the square. And that would be cer, I can't see us just leaving it as a, as a blank wall or, or a retaining wall going to the properties up on Oakwood. I'm certain that there will be, in fact, architectural features that would define the square at that terminus as well. The concept of the, the plaza deck with Merritt 7, there are a couple of, we, we really have a, a major problem with the concept for two reasons. One of them is it's, it will be fantastically expensive. To, to put a plaza deck that extends with, over an area that we don't control anyway with Merritt 7, and across the Metro North tracks, and I'm not exactly sure where you would land on the other side. The way that the diagram is done, it, it contemplates that it would not go across Glover, but there really isn't that, any room to then put, unless you're going to put in a staircase that just drops you down, which is really not much different than the, than the tube that is at the train station, as far as being welcoming to people trying to get across. I, I just don't know how you do it and, and make it into something other than just a, a better feature for Merritt 7. The other thing I can speak to is the fact that I know from when we did the, the fly bridge that goes across from Main Avenue alongside 399 Main Avenue over to the Towers complex, that first of all, the bridge over the Metro North train tracks needs to be quite high. They do not want to have a situation where it would impede future improvements to the train tracks, including potentially catenary lines. So it has to be quite high. I think you might actually have to go higher than the plaza deck just to get across the train sta, tracks. And the process of getting that type of an approval from Metro North is not an easy one. We did it. We, we were able to get it for the, the Towers complex, and we also got approval from the city by way of an air rights easement to go across Glover Avenue as well. But it's not an easy process, and, and frankly, as I said, I think the, the real issue is that it's cost prohibitive. And the last of the comments, as far as the width of the sidewalks and amenity space and what have you, again, we're not averse to that, particularly judiciously. We agree that area that the far north, buildings 3.1 and 3.2, it really, those don't have the same ambiance that you would have further to the south. We certainly are, are happy to address and, and would encourage things like tables out front where there's retail and what have you. Again, it becomes the question of if you're going to push the building into a, a different configuration, then the impact on how do you design it so that you get efficiencies of both parking garages and the ability to get the number of units that will then economically support the development need to be addressed. And, and we would certainly need to look at that to see and make sure that that would work. But, but conceptually, we, we agree that the idea of a streetscape where you don't have just a narrow sidewalk, and that's it, is appropriate and it's desirable, and so that we certainly agree with.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, just a co, couple of comments. It sounds like our recommendations and, and the applicant's preferences on the alignment are are in concert. The concern about taking space away with some elements, taking usable building space away, more precisely, I would suggest that with, with the, the roundabouts I would suggest that with the roundabouts, it's minimal, but that maybe the impact of making the square larger may not be worth the, for the town, for the city of Norwalk, the impact on the client. So, that might be a reasonable position to be in, roundabouts, but not a bigger square. And then as far as the deck, I think at this point, you might be saying, this is a planning exercise. It's not necessarily something that you're thinking the applicant would be responsible for, but just a, well, what would be good for Norwalk in the long term? And then, how does it get funded is a completely separate issue?
Thank you. My, one of my concerns here is the assumption, and David, I understand why, but the assumption that you're going to have the number of units, the height of the buildings, the square footage that you're proposing. And I understand that your numbers suggest that you need that in order to make this financially doable. On the other hand, the commission may decide that that is just too large a volume for the city or for this location. And that if you're going to get something built, it may be of a somewhat different scale than you're currently proposing. I just, I needed to say that because it's, you know, if we don't bring it up, it's clear they're going to be brought up by the public at some point. So, it's, I think it's something that we all need to keep in mind as we attempt to move this forward.
Completely understand that that is the case. That certainly we are asking for zone changes and text amendments that would allow for things that are not currently allowed. And we completely understand that that is still all in play, that nobody has indicated that our proposal in any of the parameters is approved or will be approved. The only thing I would remind the commission is that we're really trying to do this in a way that is holistic and good for the entire neighborhood. And that includes things like open space and the wide sidewalks and what have you, all of which cost money. And so, it has to be a project that is financially viable in order to be able to do the things that we want to do.
And that's certainly understandable. Other comments from commissioners? Well, I don't want to monopolize this, but there are some. Go ahead, Fred.
I got one question. When we were talking about the roundabout and widening the sidewalks, you kept making mention, well, to get the same number of people in that unit. Is there a way that, to still make a profit, maybe not as much of a profit, maybe scale down the project a little bit? Put in the enhancements and make it less populated, so there's less of a major impact?
Well, I mean, there's all sorts of trade-offs. Certainly, you can have less units, you can have smaller buildings. It just means that economically, you've got to then figure out what, how you can survive that. If it's something that, sure, if it's a question of how much profit, that's one thing. But on the other hand, it's got to be an economically viable project. And if you cut things down too low, then really there's, we can't do the same types of things that we're proposing to do.
Interesting that. I guess my question was more direct to this. You know, is there a way that you can, obviously, if you trim too much, it's not profitable. Who's going to do it, right? No one's going to walk into a project that you lose money. Where you've seen some level of profitability, but still be able to downsize. Is that at all feasible? Is there a way you could go back and examine with some of the recommendations without worrying about having the same number of units? Because you were saying you'd go taller, you'd go more institutional looking.
Right, I mean, and then that is part of it, is the question of, some of it may be addressed design. You can make, and we've already proposed, in fact, that that was one of the things that we're talking about at the upper end of things, that we have higher buildings, but they're narrower footprints, because they actually create a better environment visually for the entire area. So, the same types of design criteria can be used, which theoretically you could then have some of these improvements that would narrow or shorten the buildings. And we may be able to do this in a way that you really don't lose anything or that you do maintain the same type of development capabilities. On the other hand, it may be that either you can't maintain those through design or the commission decides that they're not willing to agree to the intensity of use that we're proposing, in which case then you've got to look and see, what does that mean? How do you, how do you address that? Can it be addressed in a way that still makes it an economically viable project or not?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I just suggest that at this point, with these suggestions, the, and considering that the diagram plans that were submitted by the applicant have, quite frankly, quite a lot of space between their building podiums and the street. I really don't think there's any significant impact on the podium area that's being proposed. It may pinch here and expand there, but it's the same area.
I would tend to agree with you on that. I tend to think that, at least as far as the streetscape is concerned, that that is absolutely the case.
Other comments, other questions?
I mean, I liked a lot of what, I was saying, I liked a lot what was put into the proposal or the design suggestion. So, is the path, just Lou and Steve, just I'm tracking, like, is the plan or the path here, people just comment on that, and then the applicant takes that away and comes back with their reactions to that?
So, this is Steve, sorry to jump in, but I think we have to get to the actual applicant, you know, so as Attorney Waters indicated, they've submitted a special permit application. So technically, that starts a new clock again, so we need to move off that. But I think we're, I'm hoping that you'll get to the stage where we'll put it to the next level. We understand that public hearings required. So, there's lists that I put together in the email I sent, and Bob's memo also highlights some of those same things, where you as a commission, hopefully in agreement with the applicant, are, say, okay, these are the elements that we want to see in the next phase of the 2D plan, as Bob puts it. And then, we have to have the discussion about the massing and the other items that Bob has laid out a proposal, how to, you know, help the commission visualize what the impacts of those are. And as a side note, we have to look at the traffic impacts and see what your comfort level is with that.
So, should we go through Bob's proposal, like each of those question points and have a, I don't want to say, like informal vote on those items? Or how do we want to parse through that?
Steve, what do you think makes the most sense?
I'm happy to share my screen again and bring the memo back up, and we can go through those. And I think if your light-mindedness is that, you know, we like items 3, 4, 5, and 6 on Bob's memo, then that's the direction that you'll have to indicate to Attorney Waters that you want to see, and then Attorney Waters has to go back to his team and do that. If they decide not to do that, then there'll eventually be a vote, one way or the other, on what's proposed.
All right, then let's do, well, do we do that now? Or do we first take a look at the traffic issues? Because those are also quite significant.
You can do either way, if you want to. If you think the traffic is going to be such a hurdle that you need to go through that first, then maybe we do have that discussion and come back to it.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know how the other commissioners feel about it, but I think that traffic is a really significant hurdle.
I agree, we should do the traffic discussion, I think, before we express our opinions on the five or six points that were raised.
Okay. Bob, would you take us through that, please?
That is Jeff Hopper of our office.
Okay.
Who is a civil engineer and traffic flow expert. Probably a better term for that, Jeff, go ahead.
I like expert just fine, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Thanks for having us tonight. DeCarlo and Dahl was tasked with reviewing the North 7 Master Plan Traffic Impact Study as prepared by Ty and Bond. And we prepared a short report of that review. And I'm just going to go through and hit a couple of the, a couple of the points and review our findings with the report. One of the, one of the things that Ty and Bond did was they identified a study area of the intersections that they felt would be impacted by their future proposed development. The study area consisted of the intersection at Grist Mill Road and Route 7, the intersection of Grist Mill Road at Glover Avenue, the intersection of Grist Mill Road at Main Ave and the DMV driveway, Main Avenue at Glover Avenue, Creeping Hemlock Road, and the Merritt Parkway southbound on ramps. DeCarlo and Dahl reviewed what they defined, or what they identified as the intersections that would be impacted by the development. And we agreed with the intersections that they selected as their study area, but we also thought maybe the intersection of Main Avenue and the Merritt Parkway northbound ramps should also be included within this area. It makes sense at this time that maybe they weren't because they're merge lanes with Main Avenue traffic. But I, with the proposed future improvements to the intersections, those may come into play, you know, following the reconfiguration of the Route 15 and Route 7 interchange. So, that might be something to look at. Perhaps they should include that and add that intersection to the study area. And we reviewed the descriptions of roadways within the project or within the study area, and those all seemed very adequate. Ty and Bond provided a collision history. We reviewed their data, and DeCarlo and Dahl agreed with their study's conclusion that there really is no substantial pattern of collisions within the study area. And then we reviewed the background traffic volumes that Ty and Bond identified for use on the development. The background traffic volumes they used were the volumes from the DOT State Project Number 102358, which is the reconfiguration of Route 15 and Route 7 interchange. And those volumes they got from DOT for the AM and PM peak periods, those volumes include volumes from recent future, kind of, and recent approved developments. And they include the traffic generated by Grist Mill Village, the Village Commercial Development, and the Sono Collection Retail Development. The background volumes that are included in their study did not include the volumes from the Grist Mill Expansion, which as I understand, is currently under review by OSTA. So, those volumes should probably be added to their background volumes once they receive approval from the OSTA. I'm sorry, am I speaking in jargon to you?
I was going to say, may I suggest that the Grist Mill Expansion is a comparatively small number of units?
Yeah, then the number of units is pretty small. It does mention three hotel units, and I'm not sure of the size of that proposed hotel.
It's not a hotel, it's three hotel units within the apartment complex.
I see, got you. So, those might not be hugely significant, but they should be included in the background volumes. So, what Ty and Bond really is submitting here is a list of background volumes, which becomes the starting point, traffic volume data for their development. So, then they would use this to overlay their generated trips as they phase out their proposed use. So, they generated a model based on these background volumes. And that model really is showing the existing roadway conditions for the 2025 volumes. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. So, then they generated a synchro model and performed capacity and queuing analysis.
That could use a explanation.
Thank you. So, they generated a computer model and put in the background volumes, you know, input all of the intersections, the geometry, traffic signal timings, and traffic volumes for the year 2025 for the AM and PM peak periods. And then they perform, and then the model will spit out basically a level of service, which is a rating of that intersection and the traffic movements based on the delay, the average delay for the vehicles at that intersection. A would be perfect, and F is sort of an undesirable level of service at an intersection. The synchro model will also make an estimate at how long the queuing is for each lane, each lane use. So, DeCarlo and Dahl reviewed the model prepared by Ty and Bond, and it included all of the intersections within the study area. The model was accurate, and it had the background volumes for the 2025 year for AM and PM peak periods. The level of service result that they published was, they weren't very good, especially during the weekday morning peak hour, which I'm sure you know, they probably reflect the existing conditions that are out there now. I'm sure there's a lot of congestion at those intersections today. So, really, what we concluded was that, within the study area, probably they should add the Route 15 northbound ramps to their study area and include the Grist Mill Expansion volumes once those are approved by OSTA and upgrade, update their background condition volumes. The analysis kind of indicates that these future planned improvement projects, the Route 15 and Route 7 project from the state, and then a few other, Grist Mill Road at Route 7 and Grist Mill Road at Main Street will alleviate some of the level of service and queuing issues that exist today. But they didn't really present any of the information about the timing of those projects or what the geometric or, you know, signal timing improvements that are associated with those projects would be. So, we have no way really of knowing for sure that those will make improvements to the operation at those intersections. I think that is the big, the big finding was really that there's, there are several roadway improvement projects proposed for the area, but we don't know how those are going to actually impact those intersections. The model, as they move forward, the next stage, steps would be for them to generate trips for, based on their sort of phased land use at the development, and apply those new, those generated volumes to their study area, and then rerun their model to see how those new volumes impact the intersections. So, I think what they're asking here is for an approval to use these as their base background volumes as a starting point for the development.
Well, I. let, 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 let's open it up for some discussion of this. My, my concern is we're asked to approve a project. And even though there's going to be a traffic study for each building individually, we're being asked to approve a project before we have a good idea of what the impact of the project is, is going to be on traffic. We were already at level of service F, which is the lowest level on, on the rating scale. What I want to know, and, and I, I think I have to disagree with, with Mr. Hopper on at least one point. I think Attorney Waters has given us some indication of when these proposed improvements are supposed to take effect. But I would like to see an analysis that shows what might reasonably be expected in terms of amelioration from these individual improvements. So we have some idea at the very beginning, before we approve anything of what, what traffic is going to, is going to look like as, as the project moves, moves forward. You know, and that, 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 that's my own personal feeling about this. And, and that's why I'm a little bit uncomfortable moving the project down the road without additional information about both the impacts of the development and any positive impacts of the traffic projects that are proposed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Just to, just to clarify with Jeff. Jeff, is it, am I correct in that all of the proposed, whatever projects have been proposed, there is no information in the traffic study of the configuration of those improvements or the timing of signals or when that work will be done?
Correct. Not within the report. DOT does have some some information online sort of showing one of their proposed alternates for the reconfiguration of the Route 15 and Route Seven interchange. And that would sort of connect the Route Seven interchange with the, with the Route 15 interchange at Main Avenue. So you would be taking some vehicles that maybe currently go up Route Seven to Grist Mill and then come over Main Ave and down. Those would have direct act, a direct off-ramp access from 15 to Main Avenue there. So it, it will change the traffic flow patterns.
There we go. And then just to follow up, Jeff, so the, 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 the Ty Bond report implies that they have information that those, those other projects will improve traffic, but there isn't anything in the report that we could check.
Correct. It does indicate that it will improve the capacity. The, the future projects will improve the capacity at the intersections. Yes.
What, Mr. Chairman, what might be useful? I, I mean, it's a bit of a chicken and egg thing because doing a lot of analysis in detail, assigning traffic to every intersection is, is a bit of a, of a task to ask the applicant. But it would seem that what would not be inappropriate is, and this is as the non-traffic engineer, so Jeff, if I'm off-base, tell me, is that the applicant is, applicant is proposing 1,300 units for their, their new project. They have approximately 750 in Grist Mill. You could probably make at least a reasonable assumption of how many trips 1,300 would add to whatever the gross number of trips is the background now. So you might get some idea. Are you adding 5% or are you adding 30%?
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that would not be a bad ballpark run. If you had the volumes generated by the, by the Grist Mill project, yeah. The, the, the background volumes that are here include, what they include is probably existing counts that were then inflated for growth to the year 2025, and then they've added in the volumes that were generated by those other three, the Village, the Sono Project, and the other Grist Mill Project. So they're an aggregate of, of three projects plus existing inflated for the year 2025.
Right. But the, but the Grist Mill Project in its application to OSTA, which means OSTA means?
Those volumes are out there. Yes.
Right, right. So that, that number could be isolated and then doubled or not quite doubled to get you an idea of what North Seven would do.
And I assume every phase of North Seven will require an OSTA application as well. So they will be required to generate their trips and apply them to the study area and, and do a capacity and queuing analysis at all of these intersections for the state.
This is Steve. I just want to jump in and maybe kind of sort of echo the chairman's comment. And one concern that I've had for a while is that if, if the current levels of service are F, and I believe Attorney Waters can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe at the last meeting with the commission, he indicated their intent is to finish up with C, which is personal C, which is this area here, and then begin the, the first phase of the master plan, which would be down, I believe down in, in the southern end for here. I'm, and that seemed to indicate that that was going to happen, you know, probably in 2021. And if none of these improvements have taken place at that time, then the levels of service are F, how can the commission consider that at that time? That, that's kind of what I'm having a little difficulty wrapping my head around.
Do you have any to respond, Steve?
If the chairman's pleasure, fine with me.
Yeah.
I can stop sharing too, if you'd like.
So, so a couple of things. First of all, the, that one intersection that had not been added, Mr. Hopper's assumption that it was because it's a merge situation is absolutely correct. That's why it was not included within the study. The, a couple of other things, the OSTA has approved the expanded third building at Grist Mill Village, which is now called the curb. That is all approved at this point, including the additional 40-some units and the three hotel units. It may not have been, have made it into the Ty and Bond Traffic Report for this application because the commission may remember that that expansion of Building C just occurred fairly recently and, and the Ty and Bond Report had been prepared a while ago while we were waiting for the master plan to be, or the Plan of Conservation and Development to have been approved by the city. So certainly the, the concept, if it is not, if it doesn't include those additional units, the analysis can be revised to include those as well. But to the point of the question on how can you approve something for the south end, starting at the south end of the project, when we don't know that anything is being done, the simple answer is you do it all the time. What you are approving now, and if I can remind those that were at the meeting that occurred before we made any applications, we had pointed out the fact that there are a number of different alternatives for improvements specifically up at Grist Mill that have been in front of DOT, that we've been working with DOT on, and that the city has been working with DOT on. And that those alternatives do in fact create a much revised and beneficial traffic movement that doesn't currently exist. We also were very clear from day one that the reason that we aren't propounding a lot of those at this point is because we do not want to have a situation where either the city or the state decides that that's a brilliant idea and therefore the applicant should now be paying for the entire thing. That being said, if you recall, the whole point of the master plan or, or the, the process in dealing with the traffic in the master plan is that we agreed when we met with certain representatives from both the zoning commission and the planning commission is that we would provide a baseline of the current conditions. And, and I think that your consultants have confirmed that that's in fact exactly what we did. It's a baseline. It does not show the impact of future improvements and it doesn't show the impact of future development. That being said, when an application is made, assuming that the commission approves the master plan and the associated other approvals, our intent would be to file an application for the first building almost immediately. That would be, as we know, a site plan review application, which would require not only a demonstration of stable traffic flow to this satisfaction of the city, but it also, as, as Mr. Hopper has indicated, would also be required to go to OSTA as well. Every single one of the improvements, the buildings that we're proposing would need to go not only to the commission, but to OSTA. And the reality is that even if we made an application today, by the time this commission has reviewed it, by the time we've started construction, by the time we've completed construction, you're talking three years from now anyway. So to some extent, the improvements that would be made, that would need to be made for that first building would be addressed as part of the application for that first building, and we would have to include those and implement them in order to be able to get our certificate of occupancy for that. So yes, you're, there are things that will need to be done for each of those buildings, just as there are for every single building that that the commission approves. The same way that you did for Merritt Seven. When each building of Merritt Seven was proposed, they had to come back with what they were proposing with signalization and with widening and with turning lanes and everything else. The same thing will be, will be required here for each of the improvements as they are proposed.
David, the, the, the difference here, as I see it, is that the baseline, the, the existing baseline is already unacceptable because of level of service F. And I mean, as I look at the projects that Steve has put up here, expected construction 2025, three-year duration. I mean, are we talking about 2028 for completion of that? And any, any improvements being put off from eight years from now? Same is true for the two lower ones on the right. It looks to me as if those improvements won't be fully in place until 2028. And again, currently we have what I view as unacceptable baseline. And so I feel the need for additional traffic information before I'm comfortable with moving anything forward. And that's just me. I'm just speaking for myself, not speaking for the commission.
But Lou, and at that point though, are you just saying vote on the project? No, we're done? Because I don't know how the applicant can move forward here if the baseline's so bad. Like we, adding anything is just going to be worse until all, until improvements occur and we're back in that chicken and the egg question of does the state take this situation seriously without something pending to force the hand? And to date, one would argue that they haven't really done much or they've done what you're saying, but there hasn't been push. And the applicant has been saying that they want to work towards this. No building can be built without additional approval. So just from where I'm coming from, like I feel the traffic thing is, is important and an important thing. But if it's a non-starter, I don't know if we're being necessarily fair to the applicant. If, I don't know how we move past that. Because there's no, I don't know what would tell you, what would be a good answer here.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question of Attorney Waters?
Sure. Go right ahead.
Your, your, I, I'm assuming based on what I'm hearing now that you're in agreement that all of what's been presented was to give a baseline. And we're all talking about how the baseline is, is an unacceptable traffic situation now. So would it be your position that a traffic study that came in at the time of your application that said we're not making it any worse, it's still F, would be an acceptable traffic study?
To say that we're not making it worse or to say that we're making it better, and then the question is how marginally better it, it would have to be in order for it to get past OSTA, among other things. I just, I, I think that the point that I would make is that there are plans that can be implemented. And to Commissioner Cantor's point, frankly, you see at the very top where it says no timeline on implementation for the Grist Mill Interchange Realignment, that's because there's been no, there's been no pressure on DOT to do it yet. We all know that that intersection never was designed that way originally. It was decades ago that it started and it's been bad ever since it was done. But there's been no pressure on DOT to resolve it. The fact is that when you have something on the books that can be said to improve economic development is an important thing for this area, now it becomes something of importance for DOT to look at and to allow us to move forward in a greater speed than you would otherwise have. But to say that, well, and, and, and the other point that I would make is that at the very bottom of the thing where there were three different arrows that say, you know, that it's not going to be until 2028, those are all part of one project. They're all part of one large project that is down there. So they're, they're different pieces of it, but they're all part of one project that is supposed to start in 2025 and three-year duration.
But what I'm getting at is this, you're talking about coming in for an application for the first building and if it, you start your application and a, I guess you already have started it, you would expect to be through zoning and building and actual building and ready for a certificate of occupancy in three years. What if nothing is done other than what you're doing?
Well, the first answer is that your own regulations say that we have to maintain stable traffic flow.
I understand that. And that, that's, I forgot the word. And that was what I was getting at is making everything the same F grade. Is that a stable traffic situation?
I don't believe that it is. But that would be subject to, to your interpretation of your regulations.
Don't we need, before we approve this master plan to, to permit 1,300 units? Don't we need a traffic study that would show us that one, when these improvements that are contemplated are made, that the traffic at those various intersections can handle the additional 1,300 units at a level of service better than F?
If, if we didn't do it, this is a master plan process. We just did this on a piecemeal by piecemeal process. You would have exactly the same analysis rights as you do now.
I just don't see how we can approve a master plan unless we have some professional opinion that the master plan, that the traffic infrastructure can handle it at a level of service better than F.
Did, I, I, I'm going to jump in quick. I think what was said earlier was that the, and I, I hopefully got across that that the DOT modeling is available on their preferred alternatives for the seven, Merritt Seven interchanges themselves. And I don't believe that the proposed development's been factored into that model. that model. So I think that's something that can be done, that, which would show the level of service at the affected intersections. And I got another point, but I think that should get addressed first.
How do we factor that in?
Well, someone would have to run that analysis. So the DOT data is available for the preferred alternatives, but I don't believe that the applicant's team, I know DOT hasn't, but I don't think the applicant's team has run the analysis of the new development into that system.
Attorney Waters, has your client thought about, like, let's say, in 2025, the state decides not to do the improvements or to delay the improvement some years later, what would the applicant suggest in a situation like that?
Well, if DOT doesn't do the improvements, then, and as a result, things, it becomes a very clear situation that anything that you add to that is making it worse, then we would be stuck, or we would have to make the improvements ourselves.
Nick, to your, to your comment, and also to Attorney Waters, you're, what I hear you doing is suggesting that maybe we need to approve this in order to move the state projects along. And I'm not willing to gamble that way. If we were looking at, if we weren't looking at the entire project, if we were looking at just the first building, and were to try to move that forward in order to give the developer some leverage with the state, I think that's different than approving a master plan in the hopes that the developer has, is, that we're giving the developer enough leverage to move the state DOT forward.
But is it not true, Lou, that in no way, by approving the master plan, are we approving the construction of any building?
Yeah.
So we are...
True, but we're moving, we're moving ourselves in a particular direction, and if it turns out that these things aren't happening, that may not be the direction we want to be supporting.
But wouldn't we be able to take that at each building's approval? If I'm understanding the notion of a master plan and the notion here? I have no objection to what Steve said in someone factoring in the seven data that's out there and factoring 1,300 more things, sorry, 1,300 more units, and if actually that these proposed improvements actually will remove, change us from an F to something else, like, that seems like a no-brainer to do. The thing is, I don't know how we can necessarily completely say, we're going to be in this perpetual chicken and the egg thing.
Well, why don't we start there? Why don't, why don't we, we have the developer come back to us with that additional information, and then we can continue this conversation?
Yep.
The other... Could I make a suggestion? Oh, go ahead, Galen, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, the, I'm thinking of, if we don't approve this master plan, what then? Nothing changed. It remains an F, there's no further development in that area. Attorney Waters' client is stuck with a big piece of land that they're not going to be able to do very much with, and we'll see how we, anybody's...
Mr. Chairman, excuse me, if I may, maybe we should just go over each of the intersections and what the level of service during the peak period for the 2025 year are. While there are some Fs, they're not all Fs, so I don't want to give the impression that everything is at a fail level. If, Steve, do you have the report that you could share? Or could I share my screen?
Yeah, you should be able to share yours.
Great, I'm going to share my screen.
And Jeff, is this factoring in the thing that Steve mentioned about the, how the proposed Route 7 improvements would impact traffic or not?
No, no.
So this is, this is no, so this is no, no improvements what we're dealing with, what we're dealing with?
Correct. This is really, this truly is baseline, this is existing geometry, existing signal timings with volumes that are grown to the year 2025, and the volumes from those approved, those other three approved projects. So at this table from the tie-in bond report, let's see if I can highlight. So at Grist Mill Road and US Route 7, during the, so this column represents the morning peak hour, and this column represents the afternoon peak hour. Grist Mill Road at Route 7 is an F during the, during the morning peak hour with 127, average 127-second delay. And during the PM peak hour, it's an F with an average 88-second delay. Grist Mill Road at Glover is an E during the morning peak period, and a C during the afternoon peak period. Grist Mill Road at Main and the DMV Drive is a level of service D with a delay time of 52 seconds during the AM peak period, and an F with a delay time of 108.7 seconds during the PM peak period. And the Main Avenue at Glover creeping hemlock, and really also the Route 15 southbound ramp, off-ramp as well, is a level, level of service F with 151-second delay during the AM peak period, and a D during the PM peak period. And the AM and PM peak period typically represent the worst one hour of traffic, you're really your rush hour period during the morning and afternoon. So that is, that is a summary of what they, what they are, the baseline is for that study area.
So I assume, without any of the proposed projects going forward, correct me here if I'm wrong, that these will either stay as they are or get worse?
That would be correct, yes. I mean, you may see, other, other elements might change traffic flow, but unless there's some, some major shift in traffic patterns, I mean, if you looked at it currently during COVID, you would probably see different, much lower traffic patterns at this point, but yeah, under normal circumstances and without any other changes in the area.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, if I may, two points to get back to the issue that you and Nick were going over. If they, if the state modeling is available, and they can factor that, the new development into that model, that would get to Mr. Johnson's point. So I think to move the process forward, you could continue with the application and start the public hearing process, and they have, should be, have to provide that information as part of the overall application. And if they're, that information's not provided, it doesn't meet your satisfaction, then you have the ability to deny not only the special permit, but the master plan as a whole. So we can still move the ball down the field and still ask for additional information. I'd like to ask Attorney Waters a question, if I might. He kind of, he indicated, I'll try to be as blunt as possible, with, assuming that the curb C is done, and you, you know, the master plan is approved, and you come in with your site plan application for the first building of the new phase, you seem to indicate, and correct me if I'm wrong, that you contemplate improvements being at the Grist Mill side that are not on the, are not on the current calendar, but this approval would move them up to the top of the front burner, and the funding, whether it's some of the money that's already allocated, or additional money by you, or the city, or the state, will have to be put in to get this improvement done, which would be required to, for you to go forward with your project.
I think, Steve, if I got your question correct, the answer is yes, that we would, there would be improvements that would be required in order to build any of the buildings that are contemplated here. We believe that where that would probably be located is not at the Route 7, Route 15 southern end of the project, that it would be at the northern end of the project, at the Grist Mill and Main Avenue improvements. And to, just to respond quickly to Chairman Schulman's comment, one of the reasons that we believe that we would be able to encourage the state to make this a priority is because of the area, the total area and the total development that we're proposing. The comment that, well, maybe if it was just, you know, the first building, that would be good to get the state interested. The state, frankly, and with respect, would not be interested in doing a major intersection improvement for a building that's probably a couple hundred units. It's just, it wouldn't move the needle for them as a basis for them saying, yeah, we really should put, get these improvements in place because that would support economic development. 1,300 units, and the support that it provides to the Class A office buildings that are in that location, is something, it's a whole different story. And that actually gets their attention, which you would not get with a single building there.
David, I don't disagree with that at all. I was simply suggesting that if we moved forward with the first building, it gives you an opportunity to sell the entire project to the state. But Steve, back to, I, I'm comfortable with what Steve said in terms of trying to move this forward, that we get that additional information on the traffic, and take a look at that and see what it means. I'm perfectly comfortable with that if the rest of the commission is as well.
I agree. Do we also have to go, oh, go ahead, Josh.
I was wondering if, and I don't know if this is out of the box, or if DOT can provide some sort of advisory or perhaps weigh in on what Attorney Waters just said. Because without some level of commitment from DOT, us pushing this project forward could be, as has been said by a lot of people here tonight, you know, could be academic. So I don't know if there's a way to get DOT to weigh in on this project here, or if they need to wait and they will only weigh in upon approval.
I, I don't want to speak for Steve, but my understanding is there have been attempts, at least on Steve's part, and maybe even on Attorney Waters' part, to get the DOT involved in this conversation, and they've resisted that.
Yeah, I have been on a call with DOT, as well as with Alicia King from the mayor's office and folks from DPW. They will not appear in front of the commission. I don't know if they will answer that question directly. That, that would, I would leave that to Attorney Waters and his client to maybe have a little more persuasion in that regard than definitely I can have.
And by the way, I mean, a peer can also take, I mean, if they're worried about saying something, I mean, I'm talking about even a written statement or a letter, I mean, something that can give us some direction here.
I would not anticipate that being forthcoming.
I would agree, unfortunately.
Okay. Perhaps Mr. Attorney Waters' client has more pull to get, to provide some kind of indication along those regards.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, their, their process is their process, and, and it's very difficult to get them to come out of their shell, so to speak. That being said, I mean, obviously, we are having discussions with them and have been for quite some period of time. It's not as if we think that, you know, we'll be able to wig the wand and something will suddenly miraculously occur. We clearly have an understanding as to what we think is likely to be the scenario, because otherwise we wouldn't have put this effort into getting to this point, knowing that we'd otherwise be dead in the water.
Isn't it possible for a private traffic consultant to use the information that the DOT has now and plug that traffic into it?
I believe that's what we're going to test the applicant with doing, and then our consultant will review that data and comment on that.
But then, the reason I'm asking that is, is then, wouldn't, I mean, it would be nice if the DOT said something, but they wouldn't really have to, I guess, at that point?
Well, they, they might, in relate, that, I think that would be factored in on the Merit 7 interchange, because that's been vetted out to some extent, but the, the Grist Mill and on the north end, there's no plan in place, so there's no analysis of traffic improvements with that. And Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that's the case.
That's correct.
David, are you comfortable with going forward in the way that Steve has suggested? Gathering that additional information to the extent that you can, coming back to us for further discussion?
Sure, I mean, I, you know, it certainly, I hear what is being asked, and we can certainly refer that to our traffic consultants and make sure that they are comfortable doing Obviously, what the commission has asked for, we'll try and provide as we can. So I would say, yes, with the caveat that I have to speak with our consultant to make sure that they, they feel comfortable doing it, I don't have a problem suggesting that we would direct them to do that.
Are the commission members comfortable with that going?
Are we saying that's the next step, and then, then we, when do we go through the PDF, the point-by-point thing that Bob laid out?
Well, I would prefer not to do it this evening, until we get this issue resolved. But if you all feel differently, we can, we can do it now. I'd also point out that we have another, you know, fairly significant project on, on our agenda for this evening. But it seems to me to make sense to wait until we have the additional traffic information.
Then, Lou, what is our timeline then? I mean, how long, is it, I mean, is this going to take 30 days? Or Attorney Waters, is that better for you? I mean, to put this, what does our timing look like then? Like, when are we going to see you again?
I don't know, and, and the, and the answer is, I really, unfortunately, I can't address how long it would take the traffic consultants to do that modeling.
We can, we can leave that, we can leave that up to Steve and David to work out next day.
I was going to ask Jeff if he, like, if he was in, you know, the applicant's traffic consultant shoes and was attached with that, how long, just to get a rough idea of the timeline.
Yeah, it, it depends on how detailed the state's model is, but they have their volumes already, they have their study area modeled, so I would think between, you know, four weeks and five weeks, you could probably get something together.
So we'd be in a position to discuss this again, perhaps late October, maybe our first meeting in November. Now, I don't see, I mean, I understand a developer wants to move forward as quickly as possible, but I want, this is a very large project, it's potentially a very important project to the city, and I don't have a problem with handling it at a very, at a slow and deliberate pace so that we arrive at the right decisions.
Well, it seems we've come to a conclusion, so we should probably...
Agree.
We don't have to take formal action, but I'd like a sense of the meeting that that's an acceptable way to move forward with the commissioners.
I agree.
So get more information.
I think slow and deliberate is the right move here.
I agree as well.
Okay. David, I guess... David, I guess you and Steve will be, you and Steve will be in touch, and then Steve and our consultants will be in touch as well.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, as always.
Well, thank you for your time and your patience.
Yes, really.
All right, let's move on with our agenda. Next item is Wall Street Recap Associates, Proposed Amendment to Revise the Schedule for the Central Business District. This is a preliminary review. And then the same, 5-20 SPR, 61 Wall Street, 17 Isaac Street, complete construction on six-story, 101-unit building at 61 Wall, and construction of four-story, 50-unit building on Isaac Street. And I think I failed to mention the number for the first project, which is 4-20R. With that, I assume we have folks here representing the developer?
Mr. Chairman, William Hennessy here.
Bill, can you make yourself a little bit louder?
I can try, I can speak louder, I'm not sure how.
You were good just then.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for hosting us tonight, all of you. I'm here with my partner Deborah Brancato, who on my screen is in the mid-right, I don't know where she appears on yours. And for the record, we're from Carmody-Torres Sandec in Hennessy. The client we represent is the successor redeveloper for the Wall Street place. It is Wall Street Recap Associates, it's an affiliate of JHM Financial Group, which is a large developer, principally of affordable housing, has got a great reputation in the business. The two principals, John and his son Todd McClutchie, are also on this and available for any questions you might have. And also, here is a resource tonight, is Michael Weisbrod and Scott Maisie of Crosskey Associates, excuse me, Crosskey Architects. Brett Holsworth is somewhere in the constellation of folks here, he's with Redness and Mead, the survey and engineering firm. C. Brown from Malone &amp; McBroom has done the traffic analysis. Mr. Chairman, as you noted, the applications before you tonight include a text change. We think it's a relatively minor improvement of the CBD zone regulation, and we'll discuss that in a little detail as we go on. The filed text change included three minor amendments, just based upon some site and architectural plan changes. I think we're down to two and possibly one. It's sort of an evolving issue, and we'll talk about the challenges that the current text poses to one of the sites, the 17 Isaac site, because it's an unusual site. We also have before you site plan applications for the property known as 61 Wall Street, which you all have probably looked at now and are getting tired of looking at it for several years since construction was halted, and 17 Isaac, a separate site across Isaac Street from 61 Wall, and currently it is the site of the closed-down theater, the Garden Theater. And accompanying all this is a CAM application for both of them. So that's what's before you. I think the way it'd be most useful for me to proceed tonight is to give you a little background for context, so you know how we got here, and then take you through the proposed building plan, so you understand what's being proposed and how it differs from the original Wall Street Place approvals. And then we can let you know where we are in the review process, and of course, take any questions you have of us. So Deb, can you put up, do you have the screen? Can you put up one of the images, and possibly the best one is the aerial image? Right, that's perfect, actually. So the image you see on the left, the larger one, is 61 Wall Street, and it's an image in its partially built state. And the one to the right of it is the 17 Isaac Street site, the Garden Cinema. And I'm imagining you can all see this, is that correct?
Yes.
Great, okay. So, the story of this area, the development of this area, really begins about 2004, when the Redevelopment Agency adopted the Wall Street redevelopment plan, and a land disposition agreement was drafted and entered into with the former Poco entities and Mr. Olson, who's since passed away. It took some years after that to obtain the first approval from your predecessors. That was in 2008, there was the original plan, and that was later amended to include a building which was the basis of this plan. This was been the Phase 1 building, 61 Wall Street, a larger site you see there. Building was about 179,000, almost 180,000 square feet of total floor area, 101 residential units, 20% of which would be affordable workforce housing. Ground, there was about 13,000 square feet of retail space and a smidge more of restaurant space as well. The building was served, parking-wise, by a completely novel, untested and unique automated parking garage that was based in the basement, the lowest level of the building. And construction actually began on that building in the spring 2015, a little over five years ago. About 14 months after the construction was started, that would have been summer of 2016, the construction stopped, and it has not progressed since that time. About a year after the construction was halted, so that would have been about July of 2017, the mortgage holder, Citibank, an affiliate of Citibank, known as Municipal Holdings, took the property back. Basically, it was a friendly foreclosure. So in the summer of 2017, Citibank, large institution, as you know, was the owner of a half-built project that was sitting there for well over a year in its present state, and there was no help, of course, from the then-recently-defunct redevelop, the Poco. And the Citibank reached out to our clients at JHM, and that this is more in the nature of a workout, how do we make sense of this project? You know, a lot of study and analysis was brought to bear very quickly, and one of the things that everybody agreed upon was that the automated parking garage was just not feasible, wasn't functional, wasn't going to work, it was just a bad idea. And so attention quickly turned to how could the building be completed yet parked if it wasn't going to be serviced by this automated robotic parking garage? So, again, analysis was done, experts were brought in, and it was concluded that the basement of this building was just unsuited for parking. If it was a self-parked affair, there was no aperture to bring cars in, and there was no ramping system that could effectively get them in and out. So attention turned to parking at a different site. And that site that was worked on quite intensely was the Phase 2 site on Isaac Street, which was also under the control of the Poco entities, except that it had different debt on it, different mortgagee, and it was heavily in debt. So, but JHM worked on trying to acquire that piece. And Deb, you can circle that very quickly. Whoa, there we go. Phase 2, yeah. The Phase 2 property that you see in the lower right there. So while that was being negotiated or attempted to negotiate, in the spring of 2018, it was learned that a different party had purchased that property, and that option was no longer available. So that was a, I would call it a very significant monkey wrench in the idea to develop the Phase 1 property, complete the development of the Phase 1 property quickly, because the best and most logical parking resource had disappeared. Deb, can we go back to the aerial for a second? So, yeah, so attention turned to, you know, where else could we find a park? But in the short term, what this meant was that there was really no way for Citibank to complete its obligations under the financing scheme, the low-income tax credits. The tax credits have been allocated, but they came with a requirement that the project be completed by a certain date. And while those dates can sometimes be moved, this setback really required Citibank to take a deep breath and step back and analyze its ability to even colorably meet its obligations under the low-income tax credit. And they decided that it was not possible. So by December 2018, they had returned the allocation of tax credit. So in December of 2018, just about, I don't know, a little over 18 months ago, here was the status of the project. The developer had gone belly-up bust, was no longer around. The parking resource to service the half-built building had disappeared, and there wasn't a logical parking resource out there. And the equity funder, which had formed the basis for the improvements that you see there and the condition that they've been in, had totally disappeared. So this is rock bottom. What happened after that, though, is, I think, heartening. So with the help of JHM, Citibank learned that there was another property that could be available, and that was the Garden Cinema property owned by the Freedmans, which had decided to close the cinema at that point and were winding down the operations. So discussions started about that. And that property is a parking resource in many ways, superior to the Phase 2 site, and negotiations were had. And that really, really opened the key to solving the idea to develop this site. So what you will see, and what Mr. Weisbrod will speak to you about, is the two-building scheme that we now have filed before you folks and hope to begin construction on very soon. So one building, the 61 Wall Street building, will be completed essentially as it was originally intended. It's on about an acre and a third piece of property, it's a five-and-a-half to six-story building. It's, as you know, in the CBD district and the planted conservation and developed, it's called, you know, Mixed Use Center. The proposal is to complete it as 101 units, as originally intended. The proposal is to complete it as a 100% affordable project, with all units in the building being workforce housing. The ground floor will be developed with a little over 10,000 square feet of retail, and there will be parking on the, call that the western half of the site, surface parking, about 40 spaces. The bulk of the property, the bulk of the parking for that project will be located at 17 Isaac Street, which will be improved with a two-story parking garage, atop which will be two stories of residential housing for a total of 50 units. And not less than 10% of those will be workforce housing. And Todd McClutchie can walk you through the different banding of affordability, if that's of interest to you tonight, or the capital stacks. But you should understand that the objective here is to develop both of these buildings essentially as a single project and do them simultaneously and do them as quickly as possible.
Attorney Hennessy, just very quickly, is there any public parking built into this project?
Probably not, and Todd can talk to you about that. That was an issue we had, and what we will probably wind up doing here, Mr. Chairman, is taking advantage of the, essentially, I'm going to use the term buyout provision for the public parking. We can walk you through that. We spent a lot of time dealing with all these issues, because as you know, once the deal coalesced and once we became convinced that there was a deal to be had, and we had a firm contract with the Garden folks, people, and we had the talent of the Crosskey people, you know, develop a building that people found, in the community, found appealing, because we have been out there. We worked with the Redevelopment Agency and ultimately the Common Council on an amendment to the land disposition agreement, and that took a fair amount of time. In fact, it took a lot of time. But I think I'm speaking for them, as well as our side of the deal, to say that when we got it right and everybody was happy with the design and the building programming, it came together very quick. And it was approved by the Common Council mid-July, and the, I think I was at the Planning Committee July 3, 2019, and they had a bunch of issues and questions. And believe it or not, one year to the day later, I was back at the Planning Committee, and we had solved everything to the point where they pushed it forward to the full council 10 days later, and it was approved on July 14. And I believe the Redevelopment Agency act on approval on July 50. And we, at that point, had advanced the design sufficiently so that we were able to file with your commission in, you know, a little over a month later, and here we are. So, and we're very pleased with that kind of process, so we hope, we hope it could continue at a pace like that. This is probably a good point, Mr. Scholman, where I invite the folks from Crosskey to show you the physical building that they have planned. I will tell you that on the ground floor, there is a space of about 900 square feet that's been reserved for the Norwalk Arts Commission to program art space in there. We think it's a nifty spot, and I'll explain why, maybe after you see the building. There may be an opportunity there. This space is adjacent to a stairwell that's already in the building that would take you to the lower level. We have, nobody's really figured out what to do with this lower level. It's a cavernous basement, designed to park many, many cars, and there's just really no real use for it now. But, you know, there's no people more creative than are creative people, artists. So maybe if there's a way to, you know, live in the ground floor space and think creatively about the lower space, we'd be all ears for that. At any rate, Michael, is this a good time for you to, you know, grab the microphone and take the commission through this building?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Weisbrod, I'm a principal at Crosskey Architects. I'm going to attempt to do a screen share here, bear with me. All right, can everyone see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so thank you, Bill, for introducing the project. So moving forward, I'm going to be referring to each of these sites as north and east. 61 Wall Street, the partially constructed building, also known as a Tyvek Temple, I'm going to be referring to as the North Phase, and the East Phase being 17 Isaac Street on the site of the Garden Cinema. Our site plan, really not going to go into too much detail here. We just have our first floor plan of each of the buildings superimposed onto the site plan as well. as well as our zoning table. We can come back to this if there are questions. Figured tonight would just kind of be a cursory review of the design. So we're talking about the north phase of the project first, given most of you are probably more familiar with this building than the other one. As Attorney Hennessy said, the basement space is no longer going to be utilized for robotic parking. So we have ample amount of space there. So we are envisioning the creation of some additional amenity space that was not realized within the original plan, about 4,000 square feet down there for some sort of amenity space. Moving up to the first floor, this first-
I apologize. Can you go back to that last one? Why can't you use some of that unoccupied space for parking?
So the original plan was designed as a robotic system. So instead of a conventional ramp system, which would take you down, you would drive onto a lift, you would exit your vehicle, and the system would basically take your car and move it down into a slot within the basement. We did not feel that system would be successful here, given its unfamiliarity and the lack of density. So there wasn't quite enough room to install a conventional ramp system in this basement. So that, with the robo-park really no longer being in play, that mixed any plans of being able to do parking in the basement.
Thank you.
So as you can see, the first floor is a variety of uses. I'll try to walk you through as best I can here. This is perhaps the floor of the building that has changed the most since the previous plan with the loss of the robo-park system. We still have a decent amount of retail space, over 10,000 square feet, as was mentioned, positioned along the streets of the building, wrapping around. And we do have the ability to designate some of that space for the art center, probably at the corner here and potentially on the other corner here. There's 40 covered parking spaces proposed in the center of the first floor, accessed via the back end of Isaac Street with an ingress and an egress. And the balance of the first floor is a mixture of circulation space to be able to access both the covered parking and the upper floor residential spaces, along with some support spaces like a trash room and a bike storage area. But the primary entrance of the building being on Wall Street, you have a through-block arcade that will access the covered parking, as well as the upper floors, as I mentioned, and a similar arrangement on the backside of Isaac Street with a through-block arcade, both to the parking and the upper floors. Moving on to the second floor of this building, it's primarily residential. There's a double-loaded corridor that kind of mimics the street flow below. And the backside of the building is envisioned as a rooftop patio, as was the previous plan, about 13,000 square feet, so a decent amount of space for residents to enjoy the outdoors. And there's also a community center located on the northern part of this rooftop patio and a fitness center. The balance of the second floor, along with the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth floors, are all residential units. And there are 101 in total, and the quantity and mix of which are exactly as they were with the previously approved plan. So I'd like to talk next a little bit about the exterior design of the building, along with the basement and first floor of this building being changed. The other significant change that we wanted to work on was the aesthetic of the building. So you'll see some materiality changes, if you're familiar with the old, previously approved plan versus this one. Like to first talk a little bit about the view from Wall Street. This part of the building, we wanted to take a little bit of extra attention to, given the fact that it did front on Wall Street, being in the historic district. We want it to be sensitive to the surrounding context. So we work closely with planning staff, as well as another local architect and historian, to make sure that we were confident in our design, that it was historically appropriate and that it was contextually appropriate. So the primary material proposed here is traditional brick, which also you'll see on the neighboring buildings. Traditional double-hung windows with masonry sills and lentils, and also starting to wrap the corner onto Isaac Street. Beginning on Wall Street, there is a series of retail storefronts, as you saw in the plan, that kind of march along the building down the street. For continuity, we're proposing some awnings above those storefronts that'll be able to showcase the retail branding and signage. And also tying the building together is a base that'll be primarily built out of stone, although there are some brick elements, especially on the Wall Street facade. Try to zoom in here a little bit. Oops. So marching along the building, this is the first leg of Isaac Street. The right side is the building, piece of the building we just saw on the rendering there. This is where the building starts to take on a little bit different shape in terms of materiality. With the close attention being paid on the Wall Street facade being historically appropriate, the rest of the building starts to become a little bit more contemporary in nature. So materials change a little bit. There's still a mix of brick proposed, but there's also a mixture of fiber cement panels and siding proposed, as well as some aluminum siding. And the composition of the materiality here, we took a lot of care to position these materials in such a way that it helped to break down the imposing massing of this building as it stands now, which is obviously all white with the exposed Tyvek. So it was done in such a way to have the building feel not so imposing. And another thing I'll mention briefly here, that I'll conclude my presentation with, is these displays that you see here under these awnings. We incorporated some streetscape displays in the areas that did not have retail storefronts behind them. There's actually the covered parking behind these areas, but in an effort to keep the streetscape as active as possible and visually interesting, we are proposing some displays to maintain a continuous streetscape here. And you'll see this on the next building as well. And this next page is the other side of Isaac Street on the back, parallel to Wall Street. So it's more or less consistent in terms of materiality and composition than the one you just saw on the other side of Isaac Street. I also have a material board here. If there are questions, we can come back to this. But again, as I mentioned, the proposed materials are a mixture of brick, fiber cement siding, panels, and aluminum siding. And the last thing I'll cover here before I start talking about the next building are some things that we're exploring with regard to the north phase. Obviously, you know, the building has sat as an eyesore for quite some time. And we're certainly cognizant of that. So we are exploring ways to make it not so much of an eyesore as soon as we're able to begin construction. So showing a few examples of what other folks were able to do with screening the building or a construction site with some visually interesting rendering. So some cases, they're showing the final renderings of the inside of the building. And in this case here, they're actually showing a life-size photo representation of this building that is actually being constructed. So we are investigating that just as a way to eliminate the eyesore as quickly as possible. So I'll start talking about the east project a little bit now. As Attorney Hennessy mentioned, this is, the majority of our parking is located here. We have 156 spaces total. It's a fairly straightforward arrangement. We have a double-loaded aisle, two of them, that are inclined to be able to get from landing to landing, which are on either side of the building. We have a residential lobby located on the corner. So people, residents will be able to access the upper floors, as well as people parking will be able to access the street. From a parking standpoint, it's pretty simple. You can go into this if there's questions later. And the upper floors of this building are additional apartments, 50 in total, 25 on each floor. A mixture of one, two-bedroom units, as well as a few studios. And there are also some additional support spaces and amenity spaces located within the core of this building. And a few of the units on the third floor actually have some balconies. And there is also a 3,000-square-foot rooftop patio being considered on this building as well. So we'll have that rooftop amenity space, just like the other building will. Speak next a little bit about the exterior design of this building. This was a bit of an interesting project for us. One thing we did not want this building to read as was a residential building plopped on top of a parking garage. So we took great care to do our best to create a cohesive design as possible. So this read as a building in and of itself, and also something that would complement the building across the street. So what we ended up doing here was aligning our windows, our fenestrations on the upper floors of the apartments with openings for natural ventilation for the garage, as well as some additional displays along the streetscape. The other thing we tried to do here that tied this together was to introduce setbacks of the upper floors. So as you can see on the back, these niches relate to the exposed structure of the parking garage and kind of carry a rhythm through the building. And the other thing that these setbacks on the upper floors did for us, as you can start to see in this bottom rendering, was that it provided some buffers between this new building and the neighboring structures. Try to zoom in here a bit. You can see this neighboring house on Isaac Street is obviously a little shorter than our proposed building. So you can see that the upper story massing here is set back to, again, provide a little bit of a buffer to this neighboring structure. And the same thing occurs just around the corner on this side of the building, as it faces 19 Isaac Street. And just to quickly talk a little bit about this top rendering, this is how you would experience the two buildings as you would come down Isaac Street from Wall Street. There would be a number of trees and, you know, a brick-lined curb. But we're not showing that, just so you can see the building. But as you can see here, you start to see how these displays will sort of tie the building together and provide a little bit of visual interest, rather than a blank wall. That was certainly something we did not want, having parking directly behind on the first floor is to just have a blank wall separating the parking from a sidewalk or even having it open and looking into that parking. So we thought this was an innovative idea that would allow, again, the continuity of that streetscape. And I'll kind of conclude things here with just a little bit of a blow-up of these potential displays. In some cases, they're envisioned as a little bit deep, enough to provide enough room for a sculpture or some other works of art that the Norwalk Art Center could use as rotating materials. Again, they propose both on the east building and the north building along Isaac Street. So that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have, or I can turn things back over to Attorney Hennessy or Todd.
Could you take us back to the picture of the Tyvek Palace? I apologize for referring to that.
Yes.
Now, in the actual rendering of the building that you showed, the back of the building toward, on Isaac Street, steps up to what looks to me to be six stories. While the Wall Street facade seems to be five. And yet, that doesn't seem to be reflected in that draw, in the, again, if you can go back to where you were.
I'll go to the rendering.
Not the rendering there, okay.
Yes.
It doesn't seem to go up to a sixth story back there. Are you going to be pushing the building up, or am I missing something visually there?
You picked up on something good. So right now, only part of the north building is constructed above the podium level. The previously approved plan included five-story massing along Wall Street and the first leg of Isaac Street. And it did jump up to six stories on the back leg of Isaac Street, which we are including in our design as well. So the six, what I'm getting at is the six-story massing is not yet constructed, but is part of our design. Go back to this view here. The building is really only built up to, I believe, this point or so.
Steve, if I remember correctly, the new Wall Street plan limited the height of buildings, is it four stories?
Correct, yep.
So whatever we do, and I know we previously passed some language that gives us some flexibility, but why would we permit it to be pushed to six, rather than the five of the rest of the building? I mean, it seemed to me it makes it more difficult for us to approve the project.
That's a good question. I'm just, while I'm trying to answer it, I'm looking at the zoning chart for the CBD regs to confirm that, to make sure I don't speak out of turn. Yeah, let me think about that one a little bit and I'll circle back on that, if that's okay.
So let's open it up to commissioners with questions about the project.
In the amenity space that you were showing in the basement, are you considering that space for folks to possibly using while work? You know, I imagine the workplace, as everyone's, you know, sort of encountered, is sort of changing and people working remotely is probably going to increase. Are you considering space for folks to have, you know, go work, private space down there and things of that nature?
That is a potential use. We haven't pinned down a specific program for that amenity space. That is one potential use.
Could you expand the amenity space, if you wanted to, into that basement further? Or is that sort of unusable at that point where the wall is?
It would be possible to expand it. There is a decent amount of unused space down there.
Cool, thank you.
Michael, can you describe the floor-to-ceiling height down there and the challenges to using that basement space?
Sure, I'm going to actually pull up a building section, if you'll bear with me.
Thank you, Boris.
All right, hopefully everyone can see the screen here. Zoom out a little bit. So this is a building section that we did include in our submission that I didn't present tonight, but perhaps it would have been a good idea. So you can get a sense of the floor-to-floor heights of the upper floors, that are pretty standard. But when you get down into the basement, because this basement was envisioned as actually two levels of robotic parking that would be stacked on top of another, there's a very large floor height down here. And go back to the plan briefly. You see the center area here is actually basically a deeper pit. You see the center area here is actually basically a deeper pit that the robotic mechanism was recessed into and kind of slid along. So it's even a little bit deeper there. So very high ceilings is assured.
No windows, correct? Michael?
Pardon?
No windows, correct?
No windows, correct.
Right, and not designed to be heated occupiable space. So there are challenges to using it, which is why it's frankly become a head scratcher for us. But it is a resource, and if we could figure out how to make it usable, we would definitely entertain ideas.
Just have a curiosity question. Is, is all of the structure that's covered in tieback, is that like still good and usable?
Um, yeah, so a lot of the framing is still usable. There, there does need to be some limited replacement of some of the installed materials. But a lot of the framing is salvageable.
Tony Hennessy, will there be like, what, 15 workforce units? And will you all show us where they're going to be?
I will let Mr. Widderspoon, I'll let Todd McClutchy give you the answer to that question.
Okay.
Yeah, I can give you a little bit of a breakdown of what the affordability will be throughout the project. And Mike, you can maybe at the same time, maybe pull up the diagram that we did that designates where the affordables are located. And we can just quickly walk through that. But so the, in terms of the overall affordability, we have different income set asides for each of the buildings. And we roughly have 25% of four set asides throughout. So 25% are going to be set at 40% of AMI, which is the Fairfield County. And then 25 is going to be at 60% AMI, 25 at 80, and 25 at market. This slightly deviates from that, but that's the general income mix.
Okay.
And when you say that, are you talking about the entire project, the two buildings?
That is correct.
Bear with me, I'm going to pull up these plans here. All right, hopefully everyone can see that. This is actually a subsequent iteration of the submission. So that's why we didn't really focus on this tonight. But we've, we've since gone through and designated the affordable units, as Todd mentioned. Just showing one floor now, but what we ultimately did was to scatter the affordable units throughout each floor of the building and provide them in a direct relationship to the unit mix. So the
You know, as part of your next package, and we'll provide this, and we'll designate where each of the affordables are located. And they are dispersed throughout the, throughout the properties to make sure that they're evenly balanced amongst one, two, and three bedrooms, as well as the buildings themselves.
I was just going to ask, how many three bedrooms are there?
Well.
My properties.
So it's, it's 12 three bedrooms. And those are all located in 61 Wall Street. And then I will just read off the number of studios, ones and twos. It's going to be 35 studios, 36 one bedrooms, and 68 two bedrooms, and again, 12 threes.
Have you determined how many children of school age are likely to be in these buildings? A question we often get asked.
Actually, I don't, I don't think we have that information. We'll put our minds to it and see if we could, you know, come up with a, you know, an estimate we feel, you know, comfortable sharing. But we'll, we'll take note of that, Mr. Schum.
I have one question. How many of the people that you're anticipating renting these apartments to would be new to Norwalk? Or how many of them will be relocating? Because, you know, there are lots of, a lot of affordable housing is disappearing. And those people either have to go elsewhere or find another place in Norwalk. So is this going to be populated mainly with people who are already located in Norwalk?
Well, I don't, I don't think we have the ability under the law to exclude anybody, but we certainly have the ability to make it known within the Norwalk community that this is, is an asset. And I don't think you have a, I'm thinking reservations or any inquiries at an early date.
Yeah, that's pretty much correct.
And one great thing about this project is nobody is being displaced to build this project. So this is 100% net new units, 151 in total, 75% of which are at some level, you know, discounted off market. This is a good story.
If the community, yeah, if the community is notified and kept in the loop throughout, that should relieve some of the pressure that we get that it's adding all these school children. You know, probably already here, they would be forced out of Norwalk.
Right.
Is that?
Yeah, we agree. We see this as a great opportunity for providing affordable, affordable housing in the city and making sure people are properly housed, so they have, you know, they're right housed, and they have disposable income, and they're living in a mixed income community in buildings. Because we think that, that's the way that people should be housed, and particularly in a, in a more urban setting.
I think that's great.
Any other questions? Next step, Steve? Are we ready for a public hearing?
We can go ahead and schedule that. The text amendment has to go to the planning commission for referral, so they don't meet until mid-October. So you're probably looking at your first November meeting, which I would guess. We also need to get peer review done, design review for the architectural side. So if you're okay with that, I'll work with the applicant. And I was going to recommend Mr. Griswitz again to, to help us with that. He, he's a little bit familiar with the project already, because I talked to him about the text amendment and what he thought about the step back amendment itself, and if he had any issues with that. So he looked at the project a little bit. So hopefully that won't be too cumbersome and too time consuming for him to take care of. But I will get to him as soon as possible.
Okay. Any final questions before we let them go? Well, if not, thank you very much.
We really appreciate your time, and we look forward to presenting this at the public hearing.
We look forward to
Time is here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerome.
Okay, our next item is 4-20 CAM 70 Shorefront Park. Construction of a new single-family residence. We have someone here to speak about that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Liz Suchi and others, if you could make us participants again, that'd be appreciated.
Be all set, Liz, you just have to turn your cameras on, and you'll be good to go.
There you go. Back in, back in Paris again. Liz, you're muted.
I'm sorry, pardon me. Thank you again, and I think tonight also is going, on the line will also be Kate Throckmorton of Environmental Land Solutions, Tom Quinn of Peak Engineering, myself, and perhaps the principal of Shorefront Park Properties, Carmine Tomas. So if we're ready to go, again, thank you. My name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at the law firm of Carmody, Torrance, Sandbeck, and Hennessy. And we represent the applicant, which is Shorefront Park Properties. This is an application for coastal area management review, short for single-family dwelling at 70 Shorefront Park. The property is located in the B resident zone, and within the boundary of the coastal area management zone, because it is located directly to the west of the Norwalk Harbor. The lot size is larger than the 6250 required for B zone. It is 9,630 square feet, and there is an existing single-family residence on the property. The proposal is to demolish the existing single-family residence, and in its place, construct a new, completely conforming, single-family residence that meets not only all of the zoning requirements for the B resident zone, but also meets additional requirements set forth in a deed restriction, and that is a greater rear setback from the, the seawall setback for zoning is 15 feet. By deed restriction, it must be 25. And there is also an additional side yard setback along the northerly, northerly property line that is required by virtue of requirements of the Shorefront Park Association. Instead of a six-yard setback on that northern line, it needs to be eight, and that is met as well. The structure complies with all of the requirements of the B resident zone, as I indicated before, lot size, frontage, setbacks, coverage, building height, and number of stories. Just by way of housekeeping, all the abutting property owners and those across the street were notified of the submission of the application per your regulations on August 14th by certificate of mailing. And those certificates were provided to staff the same day. In addition, the, the proposal meets the minimum FEMA flood requirements for finished floor elevation. The minimum FEMA flood at this location is 11, and the structure will be more than 12. So it's FEMA flood elevation 11, plus the required one additional foot, plus a little more. All work will be landward of the coastal jurisdiction line, the mean-high water line, and no variances were required in connection with this application. I think we have Kate is up with her site plan. And if Kate, if you'd like to walk through the site plan and the, and describe the coastal resources, coastal policies, that would be fine. And then we'll follow up with Tom Quinn, and then also Dennis Peters, project architect. Kate?
Sure. Hello, good evening. For the record, Kate Throckmorton, licensed landscape architect with Environmental Land Solutions. I'm going to try to share my screen. Hopefully, let's see, there we go. This is ELS's planting plan, which complements Tom Quinn's site plan, and also complements my CAM report. The ELS group prepared the CAM report along with this planting plan. The primary coastal resources on the site include tidal wetlands, which occur on the eastern portion of the site. And as Liz had mentioned, the coastal hazard area. There's two VE and AV zones that occur on the property. There's also an adjoining tidal resources that include intertidal flats and shorelands. This project, which is highlighted in color on this plan, includes a replacement of shade trees along Shorefront Park. There is an existing norway maple that will be replaced by a large oak tree, native tree. We're also going to be planting along the shoreline where the seawall is, which includes native grasses, shrubs, and some screening. And there's also going to be a rain garden that Tom Quinn is going to talk more about in detail that runs along the seawall, as well as in the front, the rain garden is also going to be planted. We believe that this plan is suitable and is consistent with the coastal policies, primarily because all the activities occur within a presently developed area. And with the best management practices, including in Tom Quinn's plan, we do not anticipate any disturbance in or on the tidal coastal resources. There will be no encroachment on any of them. The property is presently served by water and sewer, and will continue to be with this redevelopment. And as Liz said, the, the new building will replace the existing building. It will be raised and in conformance with all the flood standards for the building codes. And Liz, I don't know, with that, if you want to turn it over to Tom to tow over the site plan?
Sure, as Tom's getting ready, I just would want to indicate that all of the required code enforcement administration committee sign-offs have been secured. And that was Department of Public Works, Water Pollution Control Authority, and South Norwalk Electric and Water. In addition, the Harbor Management Commission reviewed the proposal at its meeting July, August 25th, and a recommendation of approval was issued and sent to Mr. Kleppen or Mr. Baker, and those should be in your file as well. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Tom, and he can talk to you about the stormwater management system that's proposed and compliance with FEMA flood requirements. Tom?
Hi, my name's Tom Quinn. I'm with Peak Engineers, and I am a licensed professional engineer registered in the state of Connecticut. I'm going to share my screen, if that's okay, Steve.
Easier said than done.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to, it's asking me to create a link again. I don't know why it's doing that.
Well, Tom, are you linked into the video?
Yes, I am.
Because we're not seeing you.
Yeah, the host, it says that the host has me stopped. I don't know why. Kate, if you want to put your plan back up, though, I can, you can just point to what I'm talking about.
Sure.
Oh, here I am.
Okay, hold on, I'll go out. Try that again, Tom.
All righty. Can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the site plan that's been submitted. And as Liz just said, it's been approved by DPW, WPCA, and of course, and the Harbor Committee a couple of weeks ago. What we're proposing is to remove the existing structure and create a new structure. The driveway is going to get a little bit smaller. Basically, the proposed project will result in an increase in impervious area of just under 1,000 square feet, 995. The site is very, very flat. The, it generally pitches away from the structure in all directions, as does the existing site. We don't propose to change any of the exterior grades. And so what we're going to do to mitigate the increase in the water is, as Kate mentioned, we're going to place a rain garden in the front portion of the property right here, and that will capture the water from the driveway. And we have two rain gardens in the rear of the property, which will capture portions of the dwelling and the patio here. The remainder of the, the building will discharge at points around like this, which will end down onto splash pads, and then be absorbed in the soils. We did do soil testing, and what we have is bank run sand and gravels right below a thin topsoil layer. And we did perk test, and of course, and the perk rate was very high. These three rain gardens have all been designed for the water quality volume from those contributing areas. And so the best management practices that we're talking about to meet the City of Norwalk Drainage Manual, the current drainage manual from 2017, are, as we mentioned, maximizing the infiltration to the great soils that have high infiltration rates. We're going to place these three rain gardens, which will have some bio-retention and uptake, and of course, treat some of the water as it sits for about 20, 12 hours, and then is absorbed into the soils. And then, of course, we have the rest of the water, which will be spreading out onto the ground and be absorbed by the soils. As I mentioned, this has all been conformed, conforms to the City of Norwalk Drainage Manual. And the construction also involves standard practices for erosion controls. We're going to place double row cell fence all along the seawall here. We've got a construction entrance that's going to go in this location, and of course, cell fence along the front and sides of the property. So I think that's pretty much that. If anybody has any questions? No? I'll pass it back to Liz then.
Yeah, Liz.
Sorry about that. If no one has any further questions for Tom or Kate, I'd like If no one has any further questions for Tom or Kate, I'd like Dennis Peters to come on if he's available and to just show you what the design of the single-family dwelling will be. As Dennis is getting ready, let's see, just wanted to mention for the record that, as you know, Kate and Tom have been before you numerous times, both of them have more than 25 years of experience each in their respective fields, so I'm certain that you would qualify them as experts and make that part of the record. Perhaps Dennis is online right now?
Hi all, thanks for your time. Let me, if I can, one second. Share my screen. I apologize, I had a conflict, I just got off another, you can be in two places at once, I just got off of the Darien ZBA meeting about five minutes ago, so I'm just jumping on here. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
So, I've been working with Carm Thomas for quite a number of years, doing his design work, and we put together the single-family house that he's proposed, so I think it's pretty straightforward. Everybody's taking a look at the plans, and this is the front facade, as it faces the street, and if everyone's taking a look at what's been submitted. This is along the southern facade, this is the portion facing the water, and as we wrap ourselves around the house to the north side. And the floor plan, obviously, is pretty straightforward, typical single-family residence. Majority of your typical components, kitchen, family room, dining space, office, car garage. Obviously, as Tom and Kate have chatted about, everything meets flood elevations, and structurally, my structural engineer has done his work to incorporate what's necessary from a structural and a flood standpoint from that regard. Second floor is as noted, and again, fairly straightforward, so I won't take up too much of your time going through the dynamics of the floor plan, but if there's any questions, I can answer with regards to the design, I'd be happy to.
If anyone has any questions of Mr. Peters? The other thing I wanted to mention that is that we received comments from staff early on following the submission of the application, and all of those comments, staff have been responded to, and if there are any revisions to plans, I don't think there were any, but all the comments that were shared by staff, we have addressed those comments accordingly. With that, that concludes our presentation, and as we've indicated, it's rather straightforward, meets or exceeds all of the required FEMA requirements, meets all of these height and bulk requirements of the zone in which it's located. It's a straightforward, single-family residential zone, a single-family residential property in the B-resident zone within the boundary of the CAM. So if you have any questions of us, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. Steve, any comments?
I have none, there were some neighbors that reached out initially, I have not heard anything. I thought they might be submitting a letter, but I had not seen anything, I don't know if Brian's gotten anything.
No, I haven't gotten anything.
Okay. Are there any, any comments from the commission? If not, I'd welcome a motion to approve the project.
The motion.
Okay, Frank made the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Michael seconded. Any questions about the motion? All right, then, let's go to a roll call vote.
Brian, you want to do that?
Sure. Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Mancini? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Okay, project is approved unanimously, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to 5-20 CAM. Peter and Diana Cotelling, 163 Gregory Boulevard, new single-family residence. I apologize if I mispronounced the name.
Muted, Liz.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Again, I'm Liz Suchi who can't figure out what mute and unmute is tonight, but, and my husband is laughing at me in the other room, so you're all invited to laugh at me as well. I represent the Cottlings, they are the owners of 163 Gregory Boulevard, and they are the applicants before you on a, again, single-family residential CAM application for property that's located within the coastal zone. You bear with me one second, I'll get some information on my end, hopefully, to pop up. But the property also is located in the B-resident zone, it's oversized, it's well beyond the 6,250 square feet that's required. Right now, the property is vacant, it has been vacant land for many years, and the coastal resource that abuts it is the Charles Creek. For those of you who've been down Gregory Boulevard, if you travel towards Shore and Country Club, you'll see this property on the left side as you travel towards Shore and Country. Mr. and Mrs. Cottling proposed a single-family residential structure, and it meets all the requirements, once again, of the B-resident zone, lot size, frontage setbacks, height, building, number of stories, parking behind this front setback. Administratively, just for the record, we've advised all the abutting property owners and those across the street of the submission of the application on August 17th, and those certificate of mailing forms were also sent to the zoning office, hopefully, those made it to the file. And there are a variety of individuals that you may hear from in the next couple of minutes, and those include Bill Andriopoulos and Maria Genovese of Andriopoulos Design Associates, the project architects, and Andy Sumalidis, principal at Landtech, and Andy is the civil engineer on the project. The property, the FEMA flood elevation zone is elevation 12, so the finished floor elevation of this structure is at 12+, meaning all the requirements. The requisite flow vents are proposed, and ADA will get into that in just a minute. No variances were required in connection with this application, and as I had mentioned with the prior application, the requisite code enforcement administration committee official departments have signed off on the project, and those include South Norwalk Electric and Water, Public Works, Water Pollution Control Authority. And again, the Harbor Commission reviewed this application and issued a positive recommendation at its meeting last month. So at this point, if Andy Sumalidis could possibly come on and just describe the site plan and the stormwater management plan for the project, as well as give us some information on the coastal resources and policies, that would be terrific. Andy, I will leave it to you.
Good evening, Andy Sumalidis, partner and professional engineer with Landtech out of Westport. I'll try sharing my screen here. Everybody see that aerial?
Yeah.
Good. Okay, so 163 Gregory Boulevard is a vacant lot along the strip of land that goes down to Shore and Country. To the west or southwest is a single-family residence, and to the north is another vacant lot. The coastal resources on this piece of property are tidal wetlands along the southern edge of the slope along the back edge. There's no seawall like the property. To the south, it's all just a vegetated and rocky slope, which is stable, and the tidal wetlands sit along that. The, if I could pull up the survey here. The coastal hazard area, the VE zone, is on the southern portion here. The VE zone is waterward, and the AE elevation 12 is to the west, landward. And as Liz mentioned, the first floor of this new single-family residence will be at elevation 14.12, 17, I think, which makes the lowest structural member a foot above the base lot elevation, meeting FEMA requirements. The other coastal resources are coastal waters, Charles Creek, which connects to Long Island Sound, and then the coastal hazards we mentioned already. The proposal here is for a single-family residence, very similar to what you just heard on Shorefront. In terms of drainage improvements, we are taking all the roof areas and all the proposed driveways and piping it to an underground detention system in the front yard. As you've heard earlier, it's the water quality that's most important when dealing with stormwater runoff along coastal waters, and not so much the reduction in runoff. But in this instance, we actually reduced the 25-year storm as well because the overflow from this drainage will go into the town's drainage system. So we're not only meeting the water quality standard, but we're also reducing the flows for up to the 25-year storm, which is atypical for properties along the coast. The proposal here is for a new driveway coming off of Gregory Boulevard in the northeast corner. The property will be serviced by sewer and water and gas. There's an existing electrical pole in the right-of-way that will be relocated for underground service to service the new residence as well. The last component really here is there's a new sidewalk also proposed that will meet up with the existing sidewalk to the south. No sidewalk to the north, but as, you know, as you all know, as properties get developed, hopefully, this sidewalk continues all the way down to Lovelove Park and around towards the beach. So that would be a nice feature with development of this property. At this point, if you guys have any questions, we're happy to answer, otherwise, I'll turn it over to Andriopoulos, and I'll continue my share screen as they're having technical difficulties, and then have them continue with the presentation.
Any other questions for Andy while he's getting the ADA plans up on the screen? Okay, hearing none, we'll wait for Bill Andriopoulos and/or Maria Genovese to come.
Hi, Maria Genovese here. I think Steve has to allow my screen to be shared, it's telling me that the host has it blocked.
Go ahead, Maria, you should be able to do it.
Great, thank you, Brian. We are proposing a new single-family house, as Andy mentioned. I'm going to try and share our screen real quick and see if it will allow me to do it. We're having a little technical difficulty with the, with the, with the screen sharing, but I'm going to try right now. Let's see. Open real quick. We have, as Liz mentioned, we have the foundation drawing drawn and included in this set. We're required seven, nine flood vents, and they are installed in the foundation.
Maria, everyone, can you see a plan on the screen?
No, Maria.
No.
Maria, your plans aren't sharing.
Sorry about that.
The same problem as we did earlier.
Yes, unfortunately. Andy, could I ask you to pull up drawing A1 for me, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay, sorry about that. A1 is our floor, first and second floor plan, and I'll just quickly walk you through it. The first floor has a two-car garage on the right-hand side with access to the house through a mudroom, and we have a covered front porch on the right-hand side. You come in, and it opens you up to a two-story foyer area, and then you will walk through, and then the kitchen, dining, and family room are all an open floor plan with plenty full windows on the backside with views to Charles Creek. On the second floor plan, we have three bedrooms, laundry room, master suite, and as you can see, the large open area to the foyer below. There's a walk-up attic to, there's a walk-up stair to an unfinished attic at this point. And if, Andy, if you could, I could ask you to switch to drawing A3, I'll show you the front elevation. It's a traditional, it's shingle-style exterior, very reminiscent of the traditional houses along the coastline with casement windows that have divided grills, and we have a dormer in the front, and we have a dormer on the rear as well to give some character and break up the large mass of the main gable roof. Also at the back, we have a covered porch for the continued views of Charles Creek. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I want to try and keep this brief, as I know you guys have had a lot to listen to this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone has any other questions for Andy or Maria? Hearing none, that concludes our presentation to you this evening, and we look forward to any other questions you may have or comments. There were some inquiries of us by a neighbor to the south and another neighbor across the street. I know Andy Sumalidis spoke directly to the neighbor across the street, answered that neighbor's questions, and as did the property owner with respect to the neighbor to the south. So inquiries were made of us, we responded accordingly, and I also think that any comments raised by staff, we've addressed those as well. So other than that, we have nothing further to add.
Okay, Steve, comments from staff?
Not I, Brian, I don't know if you have anything.
No.
Okay.
No.
Not any, any other questions from the commission members? All right, if not, can I have a motion to approve the project?
So moved.
Okay, Michael approved, and Frank seconds. Let's do a roll call.
Sure. Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Weatherspoon?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Mancini? And Mr. Goldstein?
Okay, unanimous, it's approved.
Thank you. Pleasure muted.
Thanks, all. Have a good evening.
Take care. Have a good night.
All right, the final action under review and actions on new applications. 5-13 CAM, 280 Wilson Avenue, request for extension of CAM approval.
So there's no one here to speak on this, it was requested by attorney Adam Blank. I can kind of run through it for you guys if you want. Essentially, they're asking for an extension of a CAM approval dating back to 2013 for a single-family house on a lot that's just south to the Sono Ice House. I can show it, I think. So, if you can see this, this is the lot with the Sono Ice House on it, and here is the proposed house. So with how the statutory timeline works, they've already been granted two.
Brian, we're having trouble hearing you.
Oh, sorry. Any better?
Yes, much better.
Okay. So they've already been granted two extensions, and then how the statutory timeframes work with the governor's executive order extending deadlines. They are pretty much at their deadline pending an extension approval by you guys.
Again, we're losing you.
That's my laptop. They're at their extension deadline, so should you guys approve this, obviously, they can go forward and get their new zoning permit and building permits. If you were to deny it, then they would have to reapply for CAM.
Brian, have any of the regulations relative to this approval changed in the last seven years?
Not that I'm aware of, just because the CAM, I don't think there's been any changes to any CAM regulations over.
Again, we're, we're having trouble hearing you.
I don't, I don't think so, Lou, I don't think there's been any changes to the regs.
Why, why, why are they asking for this after seven years?
That's a good question. That was not answered, so, if you want, I can, I can reach out to Adam and have him present to you guys at the next meeting and carry this over, it's up to you.
Well, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable having had this run for seven years. Kind of bad precedent to set, to let, to let a project go like this. I don't, I don't know how others feel.
Well, I feel, I don't know if I'm muted, I feel that I don't see what the harm of it is.
Yeah, so how, how the timing works is this, the CAM approval is good for five years off, once it's approved, and then they've been given two years' worth of extension. off, once it's approved, and then they've been given two years' worth of extensions by the commission. So that's how we get to the seven years where we're at now.
So are they going to move forward and build the house?
I think that's their plan now.
Okay.
But at the end of the day, they max out at 10 years' worth of time. After 10 years, this becomes null and void, so.
So they have, what, three more?
Yeah, but each time, each year, they'd have to go back to you guys for more extension time.
I mean, this project was approved by a commission that I don't believe any of us were members of.
No?
No, we weren't.
So you want to hear the whole thing again? Is that?
Well, I'm not sure that we necessarily want to put them through having to file a new application, but I think we ought to have a formal presentation.
We put them off for a couple of weeks, has that jeopardized anything?
No, they put their extension in before it expired, so they're not at risk of losing their permit should we push it off any further.
Is everyone comfortable with asking Adam to present this to us?
Yes.
Okay with it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Steve, do we need to take formal action, or is that sufficient?
I think that's sufficient.
Okay, then we'll put them back on the agenda when they're ready to present, maybe our next meeting. Okay? All right, well, that concludes the reviews and actions. East Norwalk TOD, status report?
Yep, tomorrow night is the public hearing with the planning committee. Fingers crossed I get through that, and then council is the following week. I believe the whole council will be at the hearing tomorrow night. They were invited so that way everybody got to hear the same presentation and the same public comments. And then the last step is the planning commission holds the formal adoption hearing, which I hope will be the very last week in September. And at that point, if that goes through, then I'll probably bring the zoning to you guys to kick off the discussion and see where we go from there.
Okay. Industrial Zone, status report? I think that's Richard.
I have nothing to say since the last meeting.
Right, right. And the zoning regulation, RFP?
Due in two weeks, so I'll try to check in with Sharon Connors, and I did a couple of weeks ago, I think she said that at that point, there were over a dozen people that were looking at it that were potential suitors, but I'll follow back up with her. She just got back from vacation, so I'm sure she's swamped with stuff right now.
Okay, and there's one other update, which isn't on the list here, and that is, we were asked by the redevelopment agency to participate in the selection and eventually with the study. It's kind of a micro-study that's looking at the immediate area of the South Norwalk Railroad Station, and I've asked, I asked Michael to serve on that committee, and he can give a brief report of where that is.
Well, last week, we met and we interviewed three firms, and we basically decided on the one firm, I believe that was called VHB?
That's right. It's a firm that several city agencies have used in the past.
Yes.
And apparently, they are now, the redevelopment agency is negotiating with VHB.
Yes.
Okay, the approval of the minutes? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting, September 3rd? Frank made the motion, is there a second?
Tagged.
Okay, Josh seconded. Any comments on the minutes? If not, we'll move to a vote. I think we can, we can just do it by acclamation. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Are there any opposed? Any abstentions? Nick is abstaining. I believe that's because you weren't at the meeting.
I didn't see the minutes. I think I was there, I don't really see the minutes.
All right, didn't intend to embarrass you.
No, no.
We, it's that time of the year, we need to either re-elect or elect new officers, and I've appointed a nominating committee composed of Michael Witherspoon, Galen Wells, and Richard Rowena. I've chaired this committee myself a couple of times. Basically, it usually takes one brief meeting to come up with a slate of officers. I will let the committee know that I'm still interested in serving as chair. If anyone else is interested in the three positions, chair, vice chair, or secretary, you might let a member of the committee know. At our next meeting, we'll hold the election, and although I expect the committee will have a slate of officers, it'll also be open to nominations from typically the way we handle it. Gazuntite.
Thank you.
Questions about any of that?
I have a question, Lou.
Sure.
Me going off the board, that leaves one position for a permanent member. Do one of the alternates slide in there, or has that happened already?
My understanding is that's an appointment by the mayor. We have, the commission itself has no say in who is an alternate and who is not.
Lou, I was appointed, I think, to fill Nate's spot, so now there's an open alternate spot.
I assume you're right about that.
Yeah, I think that's, Frank, I think that's, it went through the council right after Nate retired, so I think there's just an open alternate spot now.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I've, I've had some medical issues, I just wanted to let you know. I apologize if I sort of off my game this evening. Okay, comments of the director? Steve, muted. You're either muted or we can't hear you.
I'm blaming, it's Liz Suchy's fault. It's not anything to do with you. I have one item to go over with you quickly. We talked about a couple different times about outdoor dining and the cities being flexible about, you know, the tents and letting things go onto the sidewalks, and obviously it's mid-September now, and, you know, where I live, we've already had three straight 40-degree nights, so it's, the weather's changing. You know, the restaurants want to continue with the outdoor dining, but those pop-up tents and the things you're seeing out there right now are not appropriate for the winter weather months, so we're working with our contacts at the state, and when I say "we", I'm talking about Health Department, Economic Development, and Fire Marshal, Building Department, about how we can do things on a semi-more permanent basis, because those tents can't handle the snow load, so they can't be up there if we're going to get inclement weather, and they're not rated for any kind of outdoor heaters, so they, you know, it's not safe to go ahead and propose that. So we're working on that, and we've been approached by a couple of different individuals about working on some things on a more permanent basis, and I want to pull up what I'm talking about to give you a better sense. If I can find my browser, which is not showing up. Hold on one sec. There we go. Okay, can you see that?
Yeah.
So this is Washington Prime. What they'd like to do in lieu of having any kind of, you know, the smaller tents or umbrellas or anything like that, is to affix a permanent awning to the building, which is, you know, what's shown in the rendering here. They would wrap the awning around the corner on, that heads down towards the Maritime Center, and in the winter, the, you know, colder months, the awning, and you've probably seen this elsewhere, is where the awning could have what's called sightings on it. So this could be actually conditioned space, so that could be more, you know, permanent year-round seating as opposed to just in the warmer months. We've had conversations with the Health Department, their concern was about air circulation and air quality, because that was one of the issues with the indoor seating and the concern about COVID, and they seem to indicate that this is something that we can work through. So I wanted to bounce this off you. I've gone through with the redevelopment agency, because technically, this is, you know, a change to the exterior of the building, and they had no issues with it, and just wanted to bounce this off by you, so they can proceed with the next steps in securing permits.
You know, I know these businesses are really hurting, but I also think that we have to think long-term. This may be needed for a year, might be needed for longer. So it seems to me that anything we approve, since this is really a permanent installation, has permanent impacts. You know, the number of toilets, for example, they have inside, are they adequate to meet the need of this additional space? Aesthetically, is this the way we want Washington Street to look? You know, it might work here at Washington Prime, but on most of Wall Street, in order to, you know, because they have that brick wall, but in most of Wall Street, you're going to have to narrow the sidewalk if restaurants want to do something like this.
So I think that the difference here is, I believe, this is all on private property, so it would not be on the city property. I do have the owner, if you wanted to get some information from him, I think he's on the call, if that's okay.
May I ask a question? Is this in new, or instead of indoor dining? So the indoors would still be closed?
So it would be in addition to?
In addition to.
Well, I like the design a lot. I think it's popular in the city, it's popular in Westport, and I think in the summer months, those seats are already out there, so you're not adding any, you're just making them more, you could go further into the season, having that outdoor dining or semi-dining.
We have a certain capacity, you know, so in terms of, are there enough toilets and things like that, I don't think there's any concern, because indoors is not going to be 100% capacity either. You know, net, you probably won't have many more people in the space, right?
Yeah, and I think there's another establishment that's within the Ironworks property that's looking to do this, but I think, again, that's a private property. I don't think they could proliferate this on Washington Street, for example, because, you know, at that point, you're going to be totally on city sidewalk, and you're not going to be able to, you know, get up and down the street if you're a pedestrian, or, you know, obviously, or worst-case, in with a wheelchair or something like that. So I think that's the difference, but I think it's, you know, to confirm it's on private property, I think it's a slightly different issue. Then, then it's really, in my opinion, what do you think of the aesthetic of this in general?
Are we talking about the aesthetics tonight, or the concept of helping these people survive?
Yes.
I mean, I think that the city of Norwalk just had a terrific reaction in blocking off part of the road and allowing the restaurants to open up and loosening up the parking, and in my opinion, anything we can do to keep that street alive for another year, or however long it's going to take, we should do. I agree with Lou that if it was going to be a permanent thing, then, you know, a lot more study would have to go into it, but it would seem to me that, you know, once the restaurants are allowed to open 100% capacity, then these things could either go away or not, depending on how we like them at that point.
Yeah, I totally
I think, I agree with what Dick's saying. I think this one is intended to be permanent regardless of pandemic or not.
Well, Steve, is what you're asking, permission to continue the conversation with everybody involved?
Do you want to pop on the property owner? I'd like to confirm, make sure it's all on his property, because I think that changes the equation, but we can, we can pop him on if you're okay with that.
Sure.
Okay.
Hey, Steve, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
Hey, guys, how are you? Thanks for your time. I know you guys have a really long night tonight, so thank you for the time. Yeah, it is, it's actually all on our footprint, so where that comes down, the one that's on the screen right now, to the right side there, that is still on our property line, so nothing infringes on the sidewalk or anything.
Steve, I'll go back to my prior question. What is it you're asking us for?
Well, so this is the first one that's come forward in this fashion. I know, as I mentioned, I know of one other one that's going to come forward. I don't know, like I said, the most of Washington Street, I don't think they'll be able to do this, but they might. So, I mean, technically, you could say, is this a modification, you know, of a former site plan approval that you'd have to vote on? That would be the only other action, and then you have to think about it from the, really from the design perspective.
I speak, as a person who goes out in Norwalk a lot, I look for the outdoor dining with COVID going on. Steve was right, last couple of nights, it's been 40 degrees, so the traditional outdoor dining is wrapping up. This is a great alternative for the people who still want to sit outside but don't want to freeze to death. I think we got to give this a lot of serious consideration for A, helping our local businesses, and B, I think it gives an alternative to Norwalk that's not there right now. Especially in that area, which is not as populated as it once was.
I think it would help the Washington Street restaurants, as well as restaurants throughout the city, so if they want to do something like this, I'd say we should, you know, support them as much as we can, as Dick said earlier.
Yeah, I think we've got to use all the tools at our disposal here, and if this is one such tool, we should be encouraging this, you know, responsible developments like this.
Steve, I'd like to see a more formal presentation.
I agree with that, too.
I'm, you know, I'm not opposed to this, but I'd like to see a more formal presentation, and then we can vote as a commission. And I, you could do that sooner rather than later, we could do it at our next meeting.
Yep, okay. The next meeting is the first, Rob, does that work for you?
Yeah, am I still unmuted? I'm sorry, just want to make sure.
No, no, you're on.
Yeah, okay, yeah, if that's what it takes, you know, I appreciate whatever you guys can do, you know, we're obviously one of the guys on the street that we were working all together with the restaurant folks to make this happen. As you know, yeah, we felt it dramatically in the past three nights already. There's just not going to be businesses that are going to survive, and, you know, this is our families and our livelihoods, and we're trying to do the best we can. We, you know, we've had to spend thousands upon tens of thousands of dollars on PPP stuff this year, on PPE stuff this year, and, you know, this is going to be another $60,000 to do this, and, but it's what I need to survive and keep my staff and keep my staff's families going, and, you know, we will work however we can with, you know, I've talked to Deanna at the Health Department, you know, redevelopment actually already approved this yesterday, they're on board, so what we're trying to do is, yeah, if October is the absolute next date, then, then, yeah, we'll take it. You know, we were trying, we were hoping to try to get on the meeting tonight, because, you know, every day counts right now. It's going to take another three works, three weeks, just to get the other permits in place and act and actually get the fabrication done. So, you know, every every day is is thousands of dollars affecting our business. So whatever we can do to answer the questions, and obviously, Dan, Dan Barnett is the guy from New Haven Awning, this company that put this together, which these are engineer drawings. He does have engineer stamp drawings. And, you know, it is, you know, has everything you need with regards to to wait for snow and wind shear up to 135 miles an hour and, you know, all the technical questions that would need to be answered. But yes, again, I we, again, I appreciate your guys' time and anything we could do. We just, we're just trying to keep going, even even if, you know, three weeks down the road, all of a sudden, they they change it again and say, hey, you know what? You can't do this or this or this. For now, at least, you know, a month later, when they say you can, then then this is already built and ready to go. Every day counts, so.
And I I think you have a sense from us that we would like, all things being equal, we would like to approve this and.
Sure. I'd be willing to approve it.
You and help the local economy.
I'd be willing to approve it now and let the staff Yeah. work out the details with them, you know. And as long as the staff is convinced that, you know, it works and structurally and, you know, with bathrooms, et cetera, that the, you know, but I'm willing to get the sense, the commission, that we approve it. Don't lose the time.
Would the approval be for the duration of the COVID virus or this is a permanent change?
I would say.
Given the investment that this is a permanent change.
I would say it's recognize that it's a permanent change, you know, that the agency has approved it, you know. So I think that we should approve it and let the staff do the final review.
I think.
The other commissioners?
I agree with Rob.
I agree with Rob.
I agree with.
Well, let's.
I think just for for like good, good housekeeping practices, I think we can just have this, you know, if the commission's okay saying this is a, you know, doesn't necessarily require a commission review of what they're proposing and leave it as a staff approval that we don't, you know, don't necessarily have to take a formal action on it. What we can do is, if we get more of these in the future, bring them back on a case-by-case basis to look at them to make sure you're okay with with what they're proposing. I don't think we'll get a ton of these that are, especially some that are, you know, right front and center with a large, you know, doable footprint.
Steve, for businesses that want to do this kind of thing, so I'm not just talking about Washington Prime for a second, which, by the way, I live literally around the corner from there. But for businesses that want to do this, how can we make sure that there are guidelines or other materials that they can look at so that when they do bring plans to us, they're not starting from scratch and that there's not time that's wasted? Like, can we give them a hand here?
So the problem is that there is no guidance from the state on this. And we've been begging them to give us this for weeks now because we knew this was coming. We actually had a meeting with about six different agencies last week about the same issue because we're like, all right, it's getting colder, what do we do? And we know the restaurants want to keep going in some fashion. And they don't have any guidance on these type of structures because our our biggest concern was how it's related to the governor's COVID guidelines. And the governor, those guidelines don't address this at all. So we're.
So when you when you say, when you say the state, who are you, who are you actually talking about?
Well, that's another problem because it's different agencies within the state who are sometimes looking at it differently. It's Department of Health and DECD. So DC, DECD is more flexible. Department of Health is more conservative.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, that's obviously a shame considering it is fall now. So I don't know. I don't know if there's anything we can do to help hasten that process, but that's it's.
Yeah, we.
You know.
Sabrina Church and Economic Development has been, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, keep going.
So Sabrina Church and Economic Development had, she's had several emails, and I think this, she finally got one back today from her contact that indicated they're actually going to move on this now. And we sent, we actually sent these pictures up to them saying, this is what we're we're getting some inquiries about. And so I think they're going to come around to this point of view. You know, this is all predicated on that we don't go into another deep, deep spike in in cases.
Sure, of course.
All right, well, let's, let's just get a sense of the meeting that we we authorize the staff to move this forward as they feel is appropriate. Everyone comfortable with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Not comfortable with it? Okay, you got your marching orders.
Guys, thank you very much. We really appreciate it. We really do.
You're welcome.
Okay, comments of commissioners?
I just have a question. How how do Michael and Galen and I arrange for a meeting?
Why don't I appoint Michael as the chair of the ad hoc committee? And Michael. Okay.
Can Michael say?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Okay, so you're all, you're all set. Anything else?
So I'm sorry, just to make sure, this issue, is this going to come up again at our next meeting? Or are we now going to just sort of sit and wait and see what happens?
It sounds to me as if we're going to sit and wait and see what happens. We've authorized.
Okay.
Steve to take to take action he thinks is appropriate.
Okay.
So we'll see if others make similar requests.
I think this is, obviously, this seems like it's a really important issue. So Steve, if there's any way you can just give us an update at the next meeting, kind of, you know, what's going on here? Because this is obviously an important issue that affects a lot of people.
Sure, and if you want to do a belt and suspenders measure, we can put the that item back on your next agenda as a modification to the site plan, and you could formally vote on it if you feel better about that. And then he still can move forward with what he's doing right now. But you're kind of like, you've 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 looked at it once and thinks it's good, go ahead. Not the best way to handle it, but I think he could.
We we clearly have indicated that that we're in favor of it. I don't see anything that's going to keep us from approving it at the next meeting. So why don't we do that?
Okay. I'll I'll get in touch with him and let him know.
And Steve, do you think maybe you could have a chat with the mayor about seeing what can be done about the rest of the street?
Yeah, well, we've actually had, we were talking about that on Monday because there's the issue of, so, you know, if you recall, they put out the the Jersey barriers that are there. Those are now to to make a new sidewalk. But how does DPW handle snow removal now? So there's a lot of things to consider. So we're having those conversations, and we'll we'll have a plan before we have to do something.
Well, won't won't those barriers go away once it's no longer practical to have outdoor dining?
Well, but if it's outdoor with tents?
Yeah. There are other types of tents that are rated for the snow and rated for heat that are not permanent awning. So they could rent something like that to put over the sidewalk, for example, for six months. And then, but then is DPW going to be able to clear the snow appropriately? And can we manage that safely? So we're we're looking at all these things, lots of little variables that come up.
You may maybe like making it one way or closing the road.
That was discussed previously, too.
Yeah, or just plow it in one direction, which has been done before. Okay, anything else? If not, we need a motion to adjourn.
No move.
No move.
Sounds, all right, Josh moved. Michael, you seconded. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any of? All right, we are adjourned. See you all on October 1st. Stay well.
All right, take care, guys.
Have a good night.